Trish Bodie.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia. Alexis Grimes.
Here.
Sorry, we missed Gloria.
Here. I'm here.
Alexis.
Here.
Erin Johnson.
Here.
Grace Barbara Jordan.
Here.
Jim McKay. Pamela Wagner.
Here. With the quorum of the members being present, I now call to order the June 25th Special Board Meeting of the Leander Independent School District Board of Trustees. Due to Governor Greg Abbott's March 13 proclamation of a state of disaster affecting all counties in Texas due to the coronavirus COVID-19 and the governor's March 16 suspension of certain provisions of the Texas Open Meeting Act, this meeting is being held via video conference. I'd also like to thank our administration and technology staff for making this technology possible for the board to meet in this manner and for our district to start on, and for our district to be able to continue with our meetings. With that being said, we have a short number of items hearing, but not in length. Let's go ahead and proceed down to the next item on our agenda this evening, which will be citizens comments.
Okay, Madam President, I am bringing in Dee Nelson.
Dee, can you hear us? Can you hear us okay?
Oh, yes, I can hear you.
Oh, excellent. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Please note, this format is not a conversation or a back and forth discussion. We ask that your comments respect that limitation, and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures enumerates further requests, but I'll just sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the board of trustees, and you'll hear a chime when your three minutes are up. If you haven't concluded your remarks at that time, please do so as quickly as you can when you hear the chime.
Great. Thank you again for this opportunity. I'm Dee Nelson, a fifth grade teacher in the district. And after staying up well past midnight last week to hear your discussion about equity and diversity, and to hear that it was tabled until today, I was a bit disappointed, but then the silver lining was I'm able to get back on to talk about this agenda item again from a different angle. So, over the past four years, I have been told that the district hires leaders, from district leaders, that the district hires the most qualified educators. Prior to joining the district, I served in the United States Army as a transportation officer. I completed two master's degrees. Bishop in management. I also. Both. Dee, you're breaking up. However, I received, oh, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay. Keep going, though. I can hear you now, so go.
Great. I only received one interview before being hired, three days before the start of school. While I'm grateful to Heather Robbins for being the only principal to give me a chance, how can a decorated two times war veteran having two master's degrees, a doctor degree, and collegial work experience receive only one interview for a teaching position? I wonder how many received my application and simply pushed it to the side due to their own biases or for a more comfortable candidate. My story is far too common in the black and brown educator community, but this district hires the most qualified educators. During my first year of teaching, I started and completed the principal certification at Texas State. My cohort consisted of around 30 educators, half being black and brown, and with advanced degrees and multiple years of classroom experience. Most mentioned applying for positions in this district. One or two did receive a higher view. No interviews followed, but this district hires the most qualified candidates. While taking courses, currently taking courses at Sam Houston State University, my education has beat many hired before me throughout this district. And this is the same for many of the black and brown educators in this community. The fact that we are not afforded the opportunity to even interview is perplexing and speaks volumes, but this district hires the most qualified educators. Some of you may be wondering, well, what's her issue considering I am in the district? Well, it's unfair and hurtful that black and brown qualified educators who live here, apply here, but they're still not hired here. It's also unfair and hurtful that some black and brown students spend 13 years of their life never seeing any type of representation of themselves as they walk into the schools of Leander ISD. How is that equitable? But this district hires the only the most qualified educators. I am not asking for favors. I'm not asking for handout. I'm asking for equality. I'm asking for fair and just hiring practices, and this district has to take action. There has, yes.
I'm sorry, Dee. Thank you so much for coming out. The chime went, can I let you conclude your sentence? Make sure you get your summary in.
My summary is simply that equity is having a diverse workforce. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you so much.
Angela Pi.
Angela, can you hear us? Angela, can you hear us? Angela? Okay, you're on mute, so in a bit when you get time to speak, you'll want to take it off mute so we can hear you. There you go. Awesome. Thank you for joining us this evening. I know you've heard this before, so I'll run through it quickly. Thank you for joining us. This format is not a conversation per our board operating procedures, not a back and forth discussion. So, we ask that your comments respect that limitation, and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedure enumerates further requests. Hopefully, you've gotten those all by email, but I will sum by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the board of trustees, and we'll hear a chime. I'm not sure if you'll hear it loudly, but you can look at the timer when your three minutes are up. Okay, Angela, wait, wait, don't go yet because you're on mute. You got us on mute again. We want to hear you. There you go. Got it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent. My name is Angela Pi. I'm back again today because I just have to reiterate that LISD continues to fail black and brown students that live in Cedar Park and Leander community. Over the past year, myself and other parents have come to the district to discuss our worries and the disparities that exist, and those worries continue to be unheard. Last week's board meeting was another example. I was heartbroken last week when you, as a board, made the decision to table the conversation regarding race in our district. I understand your stance was that you wanted to ensure the conversation was meaningful. However, then it should have been a standalone item of the agenda, or it shouldn't have been placed as one of your last items. I understand that it was 12:40 in the morning when we finally got around to the discussion about race and that many of you were tired. I was tired that night as well, but unlike most of you as a black person, I do not have the privilege to not talk about race because I'm tired. I'm exhausted about talking about race, but I'm not going to stop until you all make equity a priority in our district. I shouldn't be surprised that race continues to get tabled, as this district had to have a promposal with the child having a sign, "If I was black, we'd be picking cotton, but since I'm white, I'm picking you for prom." A five-year-old punched in the eye and called the N-word. An inappropriate suicide assessment done on a six-year-old. A five-year-old referred to Leo for poking a brand new fisk or scissors. A young black girl not being able to dance with her dance king because she had stockings that matched her brown skin complexion and not the white nude stockings that were required to match her pure skin tone. Black children being called coons in the N-word. Nazi symbols spray painted on the high school. A black child being told by a white child that he used to be a slave and that the white family owned him. Black parents from a high school in the district being contacted regarding their children being on a hit list. And then just this week, a white educator of black children within LISD posted a picture of a white female on a syrup bottle replacing the Aunt Jemima vitals on her social media page and said, "Wouldn't it be cool if they just named it after us?" Does this educator not realize the insensitive beauty of its post? This educator teaches black children like my sons, but does not understand their plight. As you meet tonight, I want to also ensure that you talk about the importance of social media policies. When I see administrators, board members, and teachers posting and liking posts that are racist, I'm worried that these are the same people that are making daily decisions about my children. The list of things that have happened in LISD within just the last year could go on and on, but how many stories do you all have to hear? How would you like us to respectfully demand change? I leave you with these questions. When is LISD going to take action and stop these incidents from occurring with students? When will diversity training, implicit bias, and cultural competency training be mandated for your teachers that work daily with children of different races and cultures? When will these same trainings be required, not just for your administrators and leaders within the district, but for your board members that do not believe racism exists? When will more black teachers be hired? When will money be invested to hire an equity officer for the district to ensure the equity needs within the district are being met? When will the driving principles of the district actually align with equity for our black and brown children? You have to make changes, LISD, and I hope that that starts tonight.
Thank you, Angela, for your comments.
Thank you.
Mark, I'm not sure our citizens, when they testify, are hearing the bell, and I would rather not interrupt their speech if they know the bell rings and they can make their summary remarks. Maybe we can turn that up a little bit? That might be helpful. All right. Who's next?
Wendy Lambert.
Wendy, hi. Can you hear us?
Hi, yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Please note that this citizen comment format is not a conversation, not a back and forth discussion per our board operating procedures. So, we ask that your comments respect that limitation, and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures enumerates further requests. I think you've seen many of them via email before when you signed up. So, I'll just sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the board of trustees, and we'll hear a chime when your three minutes are up.
Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, Madam President and board members. My name is Wendy Lambert. I'm a taxpaying, single-family owner in LISD with two daughters, one at Noman Elementary and one at Cedar Park Middle School. I am also involved in the PTA and have been for seven years. I am currently serving as the treasurer for both the middle school and the elementary. On top of that, I also volunteer for reading groups in the elementary and in the library at the middle school because I think it's important to be involved. Being an involved parent with our children LISD, I find myself very concerned about the equity and diversity proposed audit, as it was based on rushed sample size of the district. Your sample size of .003% of the LISD district is very disturbing, even as you made reference in the report that the data presented in this report solely represents LISD stakeholders who elected to participate in the table conversations or community members who chose to provide input through the Qualtrics survey. From this statement, with those two examples, it still only represents those 73 community citizens after the 86 staff participants were taken out of the total. So, how can you make a recommendation that an equity and diversity audit is needed based upon the .003% of the LISD population? The audit also states on page two that these themes will lead the development of our district's equity beliefs and provide direction for future equity work in LISD. How can the LISD board make such a broad statement that your equity beliefs will be derived from such a small population? Please slow down with the process and look at this more in depth with the LISD community. Take a district-wide survey. I would love to be a part of that. In the survey instrument you used, you stated that 423 opened the survey, but only 73 people responded. That's disturbing. Professional researchers would tell you that there's something wrong, either with the survey instrument or the topic is so controversial that perhaps people did not want to put their name to the response, or a myriad of other responses. Reasons, right? This low response rate needs to be analyzed, and the survey needs to be conducted district-wide once the problem has been identified. May I suggest that once the survey is revamped, the survey be conducted district-wide, distributed through each principal at all LISD schools. Then a community meeting be held, one per high school with all the feeder schools. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Madam President. I look forward and continuing to be a proud member of the LISD district as you continue to develop more in-depth ways of reaching out to the community to gain a deeper understanding of what challenges we have to strengthen our LISD school experience for all of our children.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy.
Okay. Yusef, hi.
Hi, Yusef, can you hear us? Okay, we can't hear you because you're on mute. Here we go. Hi there. Very good. Yusef, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Please note that in our board operating procedures, this format is not a conversation, it's not a back and forth discussion. So, we ask that your comments respect the limitations, and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures further numerates requests. You've gotten these via email when you signed up to speak. So, I'll just sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the board of trustees, and you'll hear a chime when the three minutes are up.
Yes.
Whenever you're ready, Yusef.
Okay. Also, just start whenever?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. First of all, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Yusef Pi. I'm a college graduate from an HBCU. I'm also a father of four boys that potentially could be going through this LISD school system for years to come. I grew up in Compton, California, and I'm gonna tell you, I've just about seen and heard everything. But in this school system, I believe that we need to get ready for change and have a better understanding of what the future holds. Soon, in this area, you know, the school district will be saturated with more multicultural families, but will the school board be ready for that? Better yet, will we still be having these discussions for years, years from now? I believe the cultural diversity training will be a great step in that direction. Honestly, it should actually be mandatory, a requirement to teach, sort of, you know? Instead of wishing and hoping, you know, our educators know how to relate to multicultural students, why don't we just give them the tools now so they can excel in the future and embrace the change? Now, as far as me, I mean, and my family, there's been plenty of incidents that have been happening, especially with my kids, yet when it's brought to the attention of the board, you know, it's been dealt with, but not many consequences. I'm hoping that we can find a level where those consequences are met. I can remember a time just last year when a coach berated my son on the track and, you know, using obscenities, but yet I didn't see any consequences, and, and I just feel like we shouldn't be put in that position at all. You know, I just want to see change come, basically, and if we could have that happen now as we prepare for the future, I think that'd be even, just a great step in that direction. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Yusef.
Thank you. Do I just leave?
Yes, so you can. Thank you.
Madam President, up next we have Debbie Davis, but the name displayed says Joshua Russell.
Okay.
Wanted to prepare you.
Debbie, we can't see you. I don't know if you wanted your video on or not, but we definitely can't hear you yet.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, we can. Hi, did you want your camera on?
No, I have been working from home all day, and I did not do my hair today.
I understand that Zoom. Now, thank you so much for joining us. Please note in this format of citizen comments, according to our board operating procedures, it's not a conversation or a back and forth discussion. So, we ask that your comments respect that limitation, and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures further enumerate other requests. You've seen them via email. I'll just sum up by saying we encourage polite, professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the board of trustees, and we'll hear a chime. I hope you hear it, but it'll be three minutes is how long you get to speak, so you might also see that on the screen.
Thank you. So, last week, I referenced the incident where my honor student was called a thug by two GHS teachers during an academic award ceremony. Some people have expressed disbelief. They prefer to convince themselves that surely my son had to have done something to warrant that rather than the ugly truth. The only more to that degrading experience was that, in addition to calling my son a thug, their hateful commentary was how I found out that my son had been accidentally excluded from receiving his NHS invitation. According to them, certain other staff members couldn't stand him. Apparently, demonstrating scholarship, leadership, service, and character meant, and I'm quoting, "He thinks he's better than us." This was my son's punishment for being too respectable. Often repeated are these words. Racism isn't consistent with the values and culture of this school or this school district, but I have to disagree. These incidents are exactly consistent with the values of the district, tolerated by a significant percentage of the community. Actions and inaction speak so much louder than empty words. They define organizational culture. Historically, your silence, cover-ups, and inaction have set that tone. The message has been received loud and clear. As you listen to other parents and students and educators, please bear that in mind. These incidents, they're not new. They didn't just start happening, and nor are they isolated or one-off anomalies. We're not suddenly upset or suddenly ascribing racism to events that we didn't before. Students of color and parents have just been bearing it and gritting our teeth all along. The real harm to the students hasn't mattered to you. The only thing that's mattered is that their trauma doesn't make the news and spoil the carefully crafted illusion. That's why you cover instead of remediate. That's why you've refused all too often to even call it by its name. That's why you've allowed it to continue, and our learned, generative... That's why you've allowed it to continue and our learned generational silence has only enabled you. My son and other students are not only bright but resilient. We, parents, are too. And it's not all bad news, obviously. Our amazing students are a testament to that, as are some of the truly amazing educators, coaches, and administrators who have been a part of the support system behind their success. There is no question that there's been more good than bad, but that doesn't mean that the bad hasn't been profound or that it hasn't left a mark. That's why we're here. We're not asking you to rectify the past. We're not asking you for anything. We are telling you resoundingly and definitively that you are going to change right now. We will never again be silent in the face of racism and we are never again going to allow you to be silent either. We're here for the plan of action and we are not going away. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Madam President, we have Perla Munoz Hopkins. Perla, can you hear us? Okay, when you get ready to speak, you'll want to take your phone off mute because we can't hear you yet. Or your phone or your iPad or your desktop. There you go. Excellent. All right. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Please note for our Board Operating Procedures, this format is not a conversation. It's not a back-and-forth session. So we ask that your comments respect that limitation and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our Board Operating Procedures enumerate further requests, but you've seen those via email. So I'll sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the Board of Trustees and you will hear a chime when your three minutes are up. There should also be a screen that shows you the countdown clock as well.
Good evening. I am Perla Munoz Hopkins and I first began speaking to this body four hundred and seven days ago, along with other students, parents, and community members, asking for L I S D to place equity and inclusion as a top priority. Otherwise, as one citizen put it, we'll be sitting here fifty years from now begging you for action. Though it's only been two hundred and ninety-seven days for the new superintendent, it's been a long and arduous year and I ask you, will it take forty-nine more for L I S D to implement change? It's certainly up to you. You only just recently acknowledged that racism is deeply rooted in L I S D. And yes, you have held community forums on equity and diversity starting in twenty twenty and have a report to share with us. But in my view, it just is going to tell us the same. While we want action, what is your report other than to tell us that there is disparity in education for minority students in L I S D? That our students are victims of systemic discrimination that is more often than not stemming from the very leaders in your organization? What we need to know is what best practices and reform you are planning to implement within the organization? In the last two weeks alone and just now, by other community members, we have heard L I S D graduates, current members, current students, teachers, and parents, many just like me, sharing with you now twice or more times that Black and Brown students are called names like the N-word and thugs and Hispanic students are the reason for a wall. Students like mine purposely left out of National Honor Society, kept off of sports, dance, and other fine arts teams and competitions, or even G P A top student placements. Admin staff who snicker when you and your child express any interest in pursuing higher education at Ivy League universities and colleges. We have learned that students of color are told that their hair is unclean, if not straightened, and young ladies are hazed. On May seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, a day after my first citizen comment at the board headlined by Hill Country News Combat Racism in L I S D, I said to the chief academic officer that I did not bring my children here to be dumped down and discriminated against. If you had taken our pleas for addressing and training staff on racial sensitivity over the summer and without retribution, perhaps my daughter would not have started the first day of eighth grade by a teacher scaring the whole class with a thread of eighteen pages of homework. And I quote, "I will be a mean, cranky, white lady to you all year." Instead, not only one, two, but all three of my children have been mistreated by their principals. I have shared with you that the Danielson Middle School principal not only lied to me about leaving my child out of the Yes?
I'm sorry, for complaints, for on specifics, we have a grievance process for that, but you can feel free to give us summary remarks, but please refer from referring to people by name.
I'm sorry, I do not think I did so. Do I still have my three minutes to complete?
Well, you'll have, because you were at the last few minutes, you can have your minute and continue from there.
Well, I was lied to. My daughter was not invited to the S A T juke tip. And L I S D came back and just said, "Well, there's no fault on our side because it's optional." So I have told our superintendent that nothing about my kid's education is optional. I have sent a video to the superintendent and the area superintendent where you can see that particular principal lining up my then-sixth and eighth grader and just making up G P As and transcripts for them. You can also see that the principal took away the top students, sixth and eighth grade, who were minority students and gave the top placements to two white females while all along giving a play-by-play to the white mom of one of those top students. He first told the mom, "Your child is second place," and then all of a sudden, right before the spectacle, tells the mother, "Well, your child, your white child tied to the black student." Miraculously, he And this is in middle school. I have a lot to say about Tom Glenn High School and I guess I should end by asking you all that I do not give permission for my children to be pictured or named by L I S D for any of their merits, nor do I give permission to Tom Glenn High School administrators to speak with my children without me being present. And when my son turns eighteen, I will be obtaining a power of attorney to ensure that his safety and his record is intact. I also don't want the school to continue suggesting to my son that the best that's available for him after high school is A C C. I'm sorry that I cannot finish all of my comments, but I will email you all the rest and thank you for listening.
Perla, thank you so much. Now, don't leave. I want to make sure you understand this. If you have specific complaints about individual district personnel, you can process those through the district grievance policies. We have D G B A, F N G, and G N F, and our administration will reach out to you about those, just because
Madam President, I have submitted all of my grievances. They have all been denied by legal, L I S D legal counsel. And they also violated F N G policy level one by not answering me at all after I submitted a grievance.
Perla, we can't do a back and forth. I'm so sorry. Our Board Operating Procedures prohibits that.
I just wanted to make my statement without interruption. Your legal counsel violated your F N G policy by not acknowledging my grievance sent on May seventh, two thousand and twenty. Thank you.
Perla, we'll write all this down. Please continue. You can email us more of your information. Thank you so much. And for all of our individuals who are listening online, if you have specific complaints, those can go through grievance policies. We cannot talk about grievance policies in Citizen Comments. That is not the place for it. Madam President, we have Tyrus Pi. All right. Tyrus? Can you hear? Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us this evening. I don't remember if I had given you this statement before, but I'll do it again. Thank you for joining us. Please note that for our Board Operating Procedures, this is not a conversation, cannot be a back-and-forth discussion. So we ask that your comments respect the limitation and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our Board Operating Procedures also enumerate further requests and trust you've gotten those via email. And I will sum by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the Board of Trustees and we'll hear a chime when your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so hi, my name is Tyrus once again. I was here last week and I spoke to you guys. And I'm here again because the issue of racism within the district to me and my family is a priority. And I feel like it is for a lot of people within the community. And it's a priority also in our nation. And it may not affect me as I'm a graduated student of this district, but I have two younger brothers, three younger brothers who are gonna be brought through this this district and all of my fellow Black brothers and sisters who are also part of this school district. So I'm here to speak for them and to vouch for them and because I would love to be felt like a priority. And I feel like they deserve that same need. And I made you guys in this meeting a priority to meet last week to hear the, to hear how y'all would attack the issues of racism and racial inequalities within the district. But that same, that same feeling was not given back to me as the meeting was ended. And I feel like this issue is a priority. And every night that goes on where it is not taken and look, and we do not find a way to make it better within this district, there's another day that it gets worse. And we cannot allow this issue to get worse within this district. So I have a question. How many nights have to go by before it becomes a priority? How many voices have to be heard within the community of how how important this is to people that are within this school district, teachers, students like myself, parents, family members that see that this is a priority? You guys are supposed to help us and make us feel like a priority. And I want my brother's futures to be a priority. So I hope that this issue of racism can be tackled because that is all I would like. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyrus. Next, we have Kara Owen. Okay. Kara, can you hear us? Okay, you're on mute, so I want to take that off in just a bit when you get ready to speak. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please note, per our Board Operating Procedures, this format is not a conversation or back-and-forth type of discussion. We ask that your comments respect that limitation and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our Board Operating Procedures enumerates further requests. You've gotten them via email when you signed up to speak. I'll just sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the Board of Trustees and you will hear a chime when your three minutes are up. If you hear the chime, please conclude your remarks as quickly as possible.
I'll apologize beforehand for any screaming children you hear in my background. We're a very lively household. And I am here to talk to you about the COVID planning that I've been following closely, all of your conversations on what school might look like in the fall and what the T V A guidelines might be and what the C D C guidelines might be. And I have some concerns and some questions regarding that. My first one is, I feel like there hasn't been much of a conversation about what the T E A has called the COVID slide. They have said that their students could be coming back this fall as much as a year behind, particularly in math. And as the parent of a child with a math-specific disability who's already behind, this is really concerning to me. And I think that some of the conversations around starting earlier have been more focused perhaps on community comfort rather than what the students need. I would like to hear perhaps more conversation and about what, how we can combat the COVID slide and how we're going to be meeting students' needs when they've been off school for five months. And are we going to go longer into the summer? Those are some of the details that I feel like have been missing in the conversation. I am concerned about the blue and gold schedule. From what I understand, there is one of the hybrid options for the elementary school that would have rotating days as well, which would have an option for all three levels. The way that's set up, have the teachers been exposed to one hundred percent of the students every single week? And I have a hard time seeing how that is limiting the exposure. If a teacher gets COVID, they're going to expose all of their students, not fifty percent of them. I would prefer to see something like a multi-track system where students are going for sixty days or forty-five days as a track. And so the teachers are only exposed to fifty percent or seventy-five percent, lowering the number of exposures to students and teachers to try and limit any, any contact or exposure to our community, which I understand is a hard thing to do and there will be exposures, there likely be school closures. But the current system, I have a hard time seeing how that's going to lower it. And then with, in terms of the I need to know before I'm going to send my kids back to school. I want to send my kids back to school. But before I can make that decision, I need to know if temperatures are going to be taken every morning of all the students and staff. I need to know what happens if someone is, comes down with it. Is everyone in the school going to be out? Is it just the class? I need to know what reducing class sizes in the elements of school actually looks like. Because the details are really foggy right now. I need a better blueprint of what school will look like before I can make that decision. Thank you so much for your time and your work.
Thank you, Kara. Next up, we have Sheila Pogson. Sheila, can you, can you hear us? Your camera's not on, your, your, your microphone's on mute, so we don't see you or hear you right now. Okay, are you there? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. First of all, thank you for your willingness to serve on L I S
Sheila?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to turn that off.
No, it's okay. Did you, did you want your, did you want your camera on?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, well, I'll go ahead and say thank you for joining us this evening. Note for our Board Operating Procedures, this format is not a conversation or back-and-forth type of discussion. We ask that your comments respect that limitation and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our Board Operating Procedure enumerates further requests, but I will sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the Board of Trustees and you will hear a faint chime when your three minutes are up.
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, thank you for your willingness to serve on the L I S D school board. I recognize that it is a challenging and demanding position with immense responsibility to the community. Your reputation for obtaining in-depth community input is a strong selling point when it comes to the investing in this district. Our family chose to invest in the L I S D school district because of the schools. As a mother of three teenage daughters and a near-decade resident in Cedar Park, I felt compelled to participate in the process that shapes our community by speaking today. And I appreciate the opportunity to do so. One of my concerns that I wanted to share tonight is the development of your recommendation to have an equity and diversity audit. That recommendation has come extremely fast to the community. For example, American Planning Association has just come out with a planning of equity policy guide and they took two years of gathering input from the A P A members before they started writing their own report. The city of Flugerville, here in the Austin metropolitan area, took eleven months to gather community input before equity and diversity audit was taken. I have lived in a variety of neighborhoods that include both coasts in the United States, big cities, mountain villages, desert towns, Asian, European, and the Middle East. I can tell you, each community is unique. Each community is unique. I cannot stress enough the importance of connecting with the neighborhood and listening, I mean, really listening to who they are, what pulls them together, and what breaks their heart, especially before investing their tax dollars, building recommendations on what can appear on what can appear to be out of an emotional knee-jerk response. I would like to encourage you to ensure that when a decision is made, the factors utilized for that decision incorporate the populace and the students that you were elected to represent before you go any farther. Please, these topics are highly sensitive and it's imperative that you help community, the community know they have been heard and that they, that you're on the same team before you go and start building recommend- recommendations. Stop and listen before moving forward. Do your due diligence in hearing everyone and make sure everyone is at the table. In the assurance that all relevant voices are heard, may I also suggest the on, that only those individuals who live in the district may have input to the community voice. In the development of the report, i- if it's the district's desire to employ an outside contractor, that's understandable. Also, if the board calls in outside professional experts, that's also understandable. But please, ensure whoever gives input into the community voice are residents and taxpaying citizens of LISD. This is a report for the unique district of LISD, not any other school district in our state or any other state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jennifer Fleck. Jennifer, can you hear us? Okay, your, your microphone's on mute right now, so when you get ready to speak, you'll wanna take it off. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please note per our bar, board operating procedures, that this is not a conversation or back and forth discussion. So we ask your comments, respect that limitation. And as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures enumerates further requests. You should have gotten those via email when you signed up to speak. I'll sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the board of trustees. And you will hear a faint chime when your three minutes are up. I will ask you to make a summary statement if you have not concluded by that time. We will respond. Our board operating procedures enumerate further requests. You should have gotten those via email when you signed up. There we go.
Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry. Good evening, um, LISD, LISD Board. My name is Jennifer Fleck. I am running for state representative in House District 47, which includes a third of Leander ISD. School districts often use the cloak of equity and diversity to introduce and weave issues of LGBTQ and comprehensive sex ed into classroom curriculums. It is the issue that brought me to the Capitol eight years ago as a concerned parent, and it is the issue that keeps me up at night and is the driving force behind my run for office. Over the last eight years, I have watched school curriculums get more and more perverse and depraved. Inappropriate lessons start at younger and younger ages, and the content gets more graphic. As most of you know, Austin ISD created their own comprehensive sex ed curriculum that was supposed to start this year, but Corona. Lessons included a video that asked fourth grade students to identify as a boy, a girl, or neither. Lessons included sexual identification and orientation fluidity and gender identification and orientation fluidity. I asked some very direct questions in reference to LISD goals. What does political inclusivity and equity and graphic sex ed have to do with maximizing academic growth? Preparing a student for college and career or student achievement? Please do not go down this destructive path. I was educated in public schools. I was prepared for college and life. Today's education, education system is failing our students. Please return to academics. Don't buy into the narrative that it is a school's job to teach character or morals. Don't be a district that subverts parental authority to drive your own personal political agendas. I am for public education. As a legislator, I will do everything I can to promote and strengthen public education. But I will continue to fight for parental rights, strong academics, and the optimal health of the collective student body. I hope we can work together. Thank you for your time.
Right, thank you for your comments, Jennifer. Again, the board may provide specific factual information or is like existing policy to clarify inquiries or issues. Please note our SHAC, S-H-A-C, team develops and works on our sex education curriculum together as a group. And then they bring that to the board. They have not done that, so that is not something we are discussing this evening. The State Board of Education next week will be taking up their um, public health and PE um, teaks, but that is not the conversation we'll be having at this district level. Next up, we have Daryl Frost. Daryl, we see an icon for you. We don't see you yet. Oh, there we are. Alright, hello. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Hello, thank you for um, allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Yes, please no, please note this format um, is not gonna be a conversation, so it won't be a back and forth discussion for our board operating procedures. We ask your comments, respect that limitation. And as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name or who may not be able to respond. Furthermore, our board operating procedures enumerates further requests, but you should have already gotten those via email when you signed up to speak. I will sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the board of trustees. And you'll hear a faint chime when your three minutes are up. I will ask you to do a summarizing remark if you haven't done it, uh, concluded after the bell chimes.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, I appreciate your interest in this issue and uh, the efforts that uh, the board has taken to determine what's happening in the district and uh, what should be done to address any problems. I moved to Leander about six months ago with my wife. Uh, we don't have any kids yet, but we um, hope to be here for a while. And I'm grateful to be living in a good district um, like LISD. I appreciate the um, the studies that uh, were conducted through uh, roundtable forums uh, back in March. Uh, studies have shown that that's the most uh, effective and accurate method of gathering community input. I would, I would ask that uh, more roundtable discussions uh, be conducted before committing to um, an audit that is um, such as the one being considered. The, I, I participated in uh, one of the Destination Bell Boulevard planning sessions um, for Cedar Park uh, a few years ago. And I remember there being uh, several such sessions over an extended period of time. The session that I went to was, was well-attended. Probably close to 100 people. And, and I'm concerned that the uh, number of meetings and the uh, attendance level of those meetings uh, isn't sufficient to have uh, determine the, the necessity for an, an audit of, of this kind. I would, I would encourage the, the board to uh, continue these roundtable discussions at, at all six high schools. And uh, provide public notices so that uh, the maximum number of people can, can attend and participate in an online survey. The, I'm, I'm concerned that uh, such a definitive conclusion about systemic patterns of inequity uh, was made using the amount of information that was gathered. And uh, in addition to the use of the, the tax dollars when, when funds are, are short, I'm concerned about the uh, objectivity of a potential audit when it appears that uh, a conclusion has, has already been made. I appreciate uh, again, your uh, interest in this issue and allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you.
Next, we have Doug James. Doug, we can see you. Your microphone's on mute, so you'll wanna take that off when you get ready to speak to us. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please note per our board operating procedures, that this format is not conversational. It's not a back and forth discussion. We ask that your comments respect that limitation. And as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures enumerate further requests, but you should have gotten those already via email when you signed up. I'll sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the board of trustees. And you'll hear a faint chime when your three minutes are up. Um, if you speak past that, I may have to interrupt to ask you to make a summary remark.
Thank you, Madam President, board members, executive staff, uh, and thank you for your service, board members. I know it's a volunteer position, she committed a lot of hours. Uh, and you have a, a significant commitment that you make to our district. Uh, I've been a property owner in LISD for over 30 years. I'm a father of three, one who graduated uh, from the district in 2016. I have one that's gonna graduate in a week and a half from now, praise God. And also an upcoming junior. I get to work with the district a lot as a pastor and also a chaplain for our police and fire department. And uh, one of the things I've been so appreciative of is the long tradition of excellence and continuous improvement in the district. I do want to speak in regards to the equity and diversity audit. I wanna encourage you uh, to make it a more grassroots initiative for better learning rather than top-down and special interest group-driven. In the two community discussions that have taken place, over 41% of the participants uh, were host district staff with less than 100 adult stakeholders and only 24 students participating. We need to take this opportunity for all to come to the table and to learn together on such an important and challenging topic. We need to especially use data gathering tools of community meetings in each of our high schools' feeder patterns to begin the process of educating and listening to one another and starting at the grassroots level to hear one another. Now, we state on the front page of our district website, "As we cope with uncertainty, we must partner with our community to create equitable and inclusive environments for our entire population. We create a better future for our students when we stand against racism and value the diverse culture of our community. Hope is not enough. At Leander ISD, we demand equity." I commend that statement, and I pray that we're committed to living it out. There's zero place for racism in our world today, and it needs to be completely eradicated through education and expectations and consequences through policy and procedures. We need to honor and respect all, but we also need to make sure that we don't elevate single ideology that almost exists in areas outside of race. After looking at the credentials of Dr. Edwards, who's a professor and national board member of the ACLU and executive board member of the ACLU in Kentucky, and looking at the listing of resources on your website, may I also suggest that we broaden the perspective and the resources we consider. We need all perspectives at the table to come up with a comprehensive look at the LISD community, no one voice dominating. LISD is known for its inclusion. Just as you reached out and created five different community groups to give input as to what we're looking for in a superintendent, I wanna encourage you to do the same here in the divi- uh, in this diversion and eff- I mean uh, what's the rust? Let's do it right. Have a comprehensive community input, as, as some are suggesting tonight, before you go into an audit and predetermined values and conclusions of what is happening in LISD. Wisdom comes through a process of learning and hearing each other. We implore you to hear your constituency through a comprehensive community outreach. Please do not proceed forward with less than a fraction of 1% of district input.
Can you summarize for us, Doug?
So I just ask that you please consider this, and then also remember that LISD is not a, not AISD. So let's not go down the same path that AISD did uh, and create the difficulties and the problems both on the legal front and the social front. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much for speaking to us this evening. Okay, next, we have Hyun Lu. Hyun?
Hi.
Hi there. Um, we can't see you. Do you know that we can't see you?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, there we go. Now we can see you. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Please note um, per our board operating procedures, this format is not a conversation nor a back and forth discussion. So we'll ask that your comments respect that limitation. And as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who could not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures enumerate further requests. You should have gotten uh, many of those via email when you signed up to speak. So I'll sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You will have up to three minutes to address the board of trustees. And we'll hear a faint chime when your three minutes are up. If you haven't concluded your remarks, I will uh, at that time, if it goes over, we'll ask you to make a summary remark to conclude.
Okay, thank you, Madam President and the board members. Uh, my name's Hyun Lu. I'm a mother to girls and have been living in uh, Leander ISD for, for years. Uh, I'm also a nurse practitioner. I'm thankful that the, the board is um, willing to hear all of the Leander ISD citizens and parents uh, on this important issue of diversity and equity. We all can he, uh, learn from one another. Um, last week at the board meeting, Dr. Gearing emphasized the importance of a community-based accountability. I agree. True accountability is where we learn from each other and no one voice dominates. My concern is that last week, um, in your board action, you passed a 20 million budget deficit. And now you are recommending to conduct an equity and diversity audit based on a um, 0.003% sample of the district's population. How much will this audit cost? Is this a wise use of the taxpayers' dollars after you passed a 20 million budget deficit? From a wise governing viewpoint, please get a far better sample of community input than the um, 0.003% before uh, you develop such recommendations like what you says in the Equity and Diversity Community Conversations Report on page nine. I think it's quote, um, "LISD should collaborate with an outside partner to conduct a district-wide equity audit to remove systemic patterns of inequity," end of quote. This was not an empirical study, as you stated over and over on the conversation report. Yet the implication is, and even the media has picked it up and said that LISD has systemic patterns of inequity. And this was based on 0.003% of community participation? Um, this is not to a- This is not to assume there is or there's not a problem with equity and diversity, but we request that our taxpayer dollars be more wisely spent on first and reasonably invest community input that could be done and based on a statistically-significant survey, community outreach, rather than the zero-point-zero-zero-three-percent of the community that was reached out to. Thank you for allowing me to bear public comment with you, Madam President and board members.
Thank you. Just getting ready to ask you to make your summary, and you did. Good job.
Next up, we have Stephanie Rebus.
Stephanie, can you hear us? Stephanie, can you hear us? Your phone is on microphone. There it is. Tremendous. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please note for our board operating procedures, this format is not a conversation, so it's not a back-and-forth discussion. We'll ask that your comments respect that limitation, and as such, please refrain from converting comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures enumerate further requests. You should have gotten those already via email when you signed up to speak. So I'll just sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the Board of Trustees, and we'll hear a faint chime when your three minutes are up. If you continue speaking after those three minutes, I may, if you don't conclude, ask you to make a summary remark to finish.
Thank you. Dear members of the LISD School Board, my name is Stephanie Rebus, and I'm a teacher at Leander High School. Two meetings ago, a young woman expressed her disapproval over the inaction of her school and the board to address issues of racism and inequity, and she was rightfully upset. I was disturbed by the board's response at the next meeting, in which you added to your notes for speakers, "We encourage polite and professional communication." It's hard for me not to see that as a direct attack on that student or microaggression. I would ask, who gets to define polite and professional communication? How long can one remain polite while being ignored? And who is the polite and professional communication for? For the mostly white board to feel more comfortable? White people have been comfortable for too long, and too often, young women, and especially young women of color, are told they are too loud or too emotional, and they are simply speaking up for what is right. What do you expect them to do when still no action has been taken to address these very serious issues? I am also wondering why we have SROs on middle-of-high-school campuses. How and why did this relationship start between local police departments in LISD in nineteen ninety-eight? Why are we seeing our kids as potential threats rather than students? We don't have enough teachers who look like our students. We have classes of over thirty students each. We have a shortage of cleaning supplies, but we can afford cops in our schools. According to information posted online, LISD claims that SROs create a welcoming environment on our campuses while ensuring the safety of our students and staff. They are familiar trusted faces for our students. They act in a proactive manner, helping to keep our school safer. I am wondering what data you have to back this up. How does their presence affect our students and staff of color? Research shows that black students are significantly more likely to receive discipline resulting in removal from the classroom in suspensions, expulsions, referrals to law enforcement, and more than their peers, which has been directly linked to incarceration rates. I feel this money would be better spent on hiring more teachers. Ongoing anti-racism and equity PD for teachers and staff required, PD. More social workers, more therapists. Finally, it's not enough to just acknowledge that racism is in our schools. We need to be taking actions to be anti-racist right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, next, we have Desiree Grandal.
Hey, Desiree. Your screens turn sideways, but that's okay with us, as long as it works for you. Desiree, can you hear us? Okay, you're on mute. So when you get ready to speak, you're going to need to take it off mute. All right, can you hear me? Looking for head shake. Can you hear me, Desiree?
I can now.
Okay, very good, very good. Tremendous. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please note, this format for our board operating procedures is not a conversation. It's not going to be a back-and-forth discussion. We'll ask that your comments respect that limitation, and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures enumerate further requests. I'm just going to sum them up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have three minutes to address the Board of Trustees, and we'll hear a faint chime when your three minutes are up. If you continue speaking after that, you may hear me interrupt and ask for a summarizing remark.
Thank you. My name is Desiree Granzo, and I'm a parent, and I also volunteer for many organizations, including PTA, and I'll be addressing the topic of equity, the Equity Report. In the past few weeks, we've heard public comments from a number of students, parents, and teachers, many of them sharing deeply personal and painful stories about racism in our school district. Tonight has been no different. The recommendations given to the board as a result of the Equity Audit promote some mild progress at best, but the marginalized members of our community have made it clear that the action items resemble more of a bare minimum standard rather than a robust program. Discussion of the report had some board members pushing back on recommendations outlined, morphing them into seemingly just a, basically, a one-off course suggestion that is optional and merely checks a box. That's not good enough. It's our duty to ensure that each and every child has equitable access to education and the opportunities that affords. The U.S. Department of Education in 2016, with David J. Johns and his team, made it clear that implicit bias and implicit racial bias exist within schools. I encourage all of our board members to get familiar with Johns and his tireless work toward equity and inclusion. John's presentation, disrupting implicit racial bias and other forms of discrimination to improve access, achievement, and wellness for students, gives a very basic roadmap for starting to tackle these issues within schools. Here are some of the highlights of actions that he outlines. Reduce racial segregation by identifying and correcting opportunity hoarding, which is a socially-defined process of exclusion. A really good example of this, which was brought up by one of our community members not too long ago, is National Honor Society, due to the subjective manner in which students are selected for limited slots. The next item is closing the achievement gap. One example of this, when we look at African-American and Latino students, they're dramatically underrepresented in academically rigorous programs. So we have to recognize that and take some action. One of the ways we can take action with that is by making sure that we have universal screening for gifted programs. Well, you might say that we already have that in place. Let me remind you that I and others know that this really doesn't happen, as experience has shown that each campus does its own thing, and there's very little accountability and little application of oversight, making sure that the same standards are applied for each and every child. Curriculum. Schools and districts should incentivize and support educators in developing and using culturally-relevant curriculum. Increasing access. Offer programs that increase access to AP and IB courses where they do not currently exist, and make sure that the offerings are commensurate across campuses. In the area of basic rights, from kindergarten through high school, black students are nearly four times more likely to be suspended and nearly twice as likely to be expelled as white students. That's sourced from the U.S. Department of Education's Civil Rights Data Collection in 2016. How do we combat this? For one, schools should invest in counselors and professional development for teachers and leaders on how to best implement discipline, including the use of restorative justice, which creates a safe space for the accused and the affected to make amends amicably. Schools should adopt trauma-informed approaches to school discipline. And finally, this may ruffle a lot of feathers, but you need to understand that ultimately, zero-tolerance policies don't work. And finally, we should address the stress of racism and how it affects learning and development of our children. Our students, parents, and teachers are all coming up here, telling you about their experiences with racism, the stress they feel every single day, and about the harm that it causes them every single day. When they tell us, we need to listen, we need to believe them, and we need to take action for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, that is it for citizen comments. We did have two others that had signed up, but they are not in the waiting room at this time.
Wonderful. All right, board, thank you so much. I know when we have a numerous amount of speakers, we can change time, but I appreciate that we were able to give all of our speakers three minutes, and we're not, did not shorten that. Thank y'all for your patience. I think it was a wonderful conversation, and we will now move on to the next item on our agenda. I'm pulling it up right now to make sure. It's Community Conversations Report on Equity and Diversity Meetings. I understand, as we move into the section, that Dr. Gearing or Krista, I'm not sure who, is going to kind of help give us more of an overview, because I know our district has been doing things for over a year, and then there's the Community Conversation Report that is kind of overlaid on this, which I guess culminated in the recommendations y'all brought forward. But it sounds like I think we just need a little more overview of kind of where we are.
Madam President, before we get started, first, I apologize for getting here late. Did we miss board communications, or did I miss board communications?
It wasn't on the agenda for this one, because it was a special meeting. Remember, this meeting was only originally going to be just discussions enclosed on our evaluation portion. We added COVID because of the ever-changing environment, and we wanted to make sure we had time to talk about this community conversation. So although not originally planned for this meeting, I know the board felt it very important, which is why it is on this meeting in the very first item up.
All right, thank you.
Do you have, do you have a comment? We're in the diversity and equity.
I'll wait for the presentation, and then I'll try to craft the comment I was going to use during communications as part of the discussion.
Tremendous. I thought we would have it too, but I pulled up our agenda since it's a special meeting. That's, that's why it's a little different structure.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have the good fortune of having Krista Colleen and Laurel and Arda here today. I want to thank them especially because they're taking time out of their, their own personal family time to be with us tonight, and so I appreciate that very much. So I'm going to turn it over to Krista, and she's going to lead our conversation tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Gearing. So just an overview of some of the work that we have been doing in Leander ISD. We have had an Equity Task Force for the past two years. Dr. Tiffany Spicer helped us get that started in the eighteen, the nineteen school year. And what we started with that is that Equity Task Force was really for us as educators to come together and start doing some shared learning around equity and diversity in our district. And so we started small with the idea of expanding, and so in the nineteen-twenty school year, we expanded to a second cohort. Again, the purpose, original purpose of that was just for us to do some of that shared learning. As we found, there's been more and more interest and more and more need to continue some of that learning and to move that into trainings. We have had some trainings. So we have had the avid culturally-relevant teaching training that we have offered in the summer, and so teachers have been able to attend that training for the last couple of summers. In addition, we did have a strand at our Continuous Improvement Conference this fall that was based solely on equity, and so Dr. Arda Berry and myself, along with some of our counterparts, hosted a session from our task force, and it was well-attended. And there were other sessions that were also very well-attended within that strand. So that is some of the internal work that we've been doing. We know that we need to expand that to include some of our community members, and so that was the next step of the community conversations. And then we started those community conversations to really bring in the community, to start hearing their voices and get a good understanding of where we are with equity and diversity. With some of that, I do want, I know some talked a little bit about what does our curriculum look like as far as being culturally relevant. And so this past year, grades nine through twelve ELA went through an adoption, and that adoption will be put into place next year. The year before that, we adopted books for K-8 ELA. And one of the things that those two coordinators who helped run that and their teams were very thoughtful about was getting quite a diverse set of books in place so that people can see themselves in the literature they are reading, and that we're able to give our students lots of choice with the books that they are reading. So not a one-size-fits-all book for everyone, but that students have choice. Both of those coordinators were members of our Equity Task Force, and that has been some of the work that they've taken out from their own learnings and wanting to do as they're guiding and working with teachers. And so many of our ELA teachers have gone through training specifically on, not only what does good reading and writing look like, and how do we do readers and writers workshop in the classroom, but also then how do we help students find books and talk with families on books that would best suit them or where they can see themselves in those books as well. And so that is a first kind of attempt there to do some change within some of our curriculum. And then as well, the board approved the American Experience Course that you heard Miss Thayer speak about, and that she and Mr. Harmon and other teachers really worked together because they wanted to provide a course where students could see themselves in the U.S. history, and so we're very proud of them for being able to move that forward. It is currently only offered at Glen High School, but there is, there is an opportunity to offer it at other high schools as well. And so that was something that was approved. So that's been a little bit of our journey over the last couple of years that's brought us to our community conversations that we're having now. Those, that journey is really just been a start, and we know that we need to dig deeper into what is our work going to look like as a community. And so that's where we are now, and so that's where we're getting some of that information back from our Community Conversations Report.
Are you ready for board member questions, discussion?
Yes, ma'am. We wanted to try to make sure that we had ample time for the board to have conversation about this topic. We're here and ready to answer any questions that you have, provide as much support as we can, and also to determine and let you help us shape the future as we go forward.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gearing. Jim, it looks like you're ready to speak.
Yes, so through Summer Leadership Institute, watched a very, very dynamic speaker this morning, talking about leadership in the time of challenge and change. And the three things that he spoke to about leadership is show up with perspective, speak with clarity, and we must model hope. It's the speak with clarity that I want to address first. Last week, as the hour ran long, I did not think that I had the headspace, quite honestly, to have the type of conversation that we need to have, and therefore, I asked that we table this conversation until tonight, where we could have a larger gathering of the community. Most of us would be fresh and ready to go, and that's why I also asked that we put this up front, not knowing that there were so many in the community that had stuck it out with us till twelve forty in the morning. I need to own that, and I do own that, and I apologize to those that waited seemingly all night only to be left high and dry and wait till another, another week. But I would also ask for, for those to consider the purity of intent. This is a difficult conversation. I have been talking about this for the almost four years that I've been on the board, and it is high time, and there's a social acceptance now that we must capitalize on to have a meaningful conversation and finally begin the difficult work that needs to occur. So first off, I wanted to apologize to the community. This was in no way to minimize this discussion. I wanted to make sure that I, for one, had enough headspace to dive in and have this conversation. So understanding that the board sets vision and policy, and that the superintendent executes on that vision, we've been asked repeatedly, and I have asked repeatedly, for what are we going to do? We keep talking, but what are we going to do? And so what I've done over the past week is I've put down some things that, that I would be very, very supportive of, and maybe this frames the discussion of what we look at in terms of some actionable items to finally start moving in the right direction. So the first thing is, I fully support mandatory training for all teachers, staff, and this Board of Trustees. It should not be, and mustn't be optional. It needs to be mandatory, and it needs to be annual, and we all need to be doing it. So that's one thing I would fully support. I absolutely support the development of a detailed action plan addressing how we are tracking towards parity in the demographic makeup of our teachers and staff to more closely align with the demographic makeup of each school. We've talked about this briefly from a holistic, a dish- Uh, we've talked about this briefly, um, from a holistic, uh, a district-wide standpoint. Um, but really I think the focus needs to be campus by campus because, um, campuses, um, have, have different demographic makeup. But at the end of the day, um, th- these speakers a- a- and the community and just what is right, um, the teachers need to represent the, the same makeup of the student body, um, that they are teaching. Um, I would like to better understand the detailed plan require, um, regarding these equity leads. Uh, who are they? How are they selected and what additional training will they receive? Um, so I, I, I would support it, but I'd want some more information on that. I would support additional reviews of our curriculum to ensure our cultures are adequately represented and included. I think that the more that we acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of people of color in our world, the more we end the stereotypes and ignorance. And as I've stated before, I strongly support a review of our class ranking system that favors the majority. I strongly support a district goal of year-over-year increases in the numbers of economically disadvantaged and historically marginalized populations that would be the first in their families to attend college. Let's set that as one of our wildly audacious goals. Let's, let's give that task to our heroic educators a- and let's start, uh, let's start leading in that area. I would also like to better understand what the disparity in disciplinary actions, disciplinary actions looks like and what steps are being taken to address the disproportionate number of non-white students in our disciplinary channel. Um, I, I, I think that's an area that, that we really need to look at and, uh, draft some actionable items around that. Um, I would support a complete reevaluation of our social emotional programs, including a cost-benefit analysis, uh, analysis, measurable improvements regarding mitigating bullying, harassment, body shaming, social isolation, intolerance and systemic and institutional racism. Given the number of students, parents and community members sharing example after example of how they have been hurt by our climate, I'm having a hard time seeing the value for the tax dollars being spent on programs like No Place For Hate. Um, w- w- we, we have to do better in that. Um, let's ensure that our programs, uh, yield, that are yielding marginal results are defunded in favor of programs that are more effective in uniting our community. Let's invest in programs that drive home the importance of treating each other with dignity and respect and provide a solid framework for transformational and sustainable change. Um, next I would like to see charter, um, regarding this, this equity task force. We, we talk about, we've had the equity task force for two years, but, uh, quite honestly, what is it? Who's on it? How are they selected? What are their goals? What resources do they have at their disposal? Um, who do they report to and what authority do they have? Um, I would like to see the board create perhaps in conjunction with or as part of the equity task force, uh, board member participation. We own this, we own this as, as, as much as the administration, if not more, quite honestly. Um, let us, let us be engaged and be part of that, uh, that equity task force and be part of that solution. Let's hold regular coffee with the board events where the sole topic of discussion is equity and inclusion. Let, let's check in regularly with our community, uh, to get their feedback and how we're doing. Um, I would like to participate, uh, in student-led discussions regarding ending racism. Uh, let our students tell us how we're doing, where we're missing the mark and what adjustments they feel are necessary to help them to be the change agents that they want to be. And, uh, I've only got a couple of more. Um, what are we doing to engage our community and encourage persons of color to serve as members and role models as well as engage with the administration board regarding missed opportunities in areas of needed improvement? Um, we have a community full of, of, uh, brilliant individuals that, uh, we could see tonight, we could see it last week or we could see it the week before. They are ready to roll up their sleeves a- and work with us to show us the way. Uh, what are we doing to, to really engage with them in a meaningful manner? While it would be easy to pass the responsibility off to the superintendent, hang on a second, my, uh, my screen's jumping. Sorry about that. One, so, all right. While it would be easy to pass the responsibility off to the superintendent by creating a superintendent performance goal relating to equity and diversity, I believe this board should hold itself accountable for progress in the areas of community building, ending overt and covert racism, bigotry, hatred, and should be a part of our annual board self-assessment. The self-assessment, which is a legal requirement, should be completed and then posted for community input and feedback prior to being discussed at a board meeting where we could then in full view of the public, present a get well plan for areas needing improvement. I would be supportive of going back to the demographic makeup of our teachers and staff, creating a way, way forward to ensure that each campus has mentors and counselors that most closely represent those campuses' populations. And I think I have one more here. I would support the notion that this board periodically receive a report indicating the number of incidents reported, um, regarding discrimination, intolerance, racism, bullying, body shaming or hazing. The report would indicate how many reports were substantiated, what actions were taken and what corrective measures were initiated to ensure the behavior does not recur. Um, this can be an item foreclosed if we're necessarily going to talk about, uh, individuals by name. But here's where I think the root of the problem, um, lies and, and it's us, the board, the board. The community wants to look to its elected officials for guidance, direction and hope. What they see is a board divided. We talk over one another, we shut each other's down, uh, when we don't agree, uh, with their views. We advocate behind the scenes where we don't belong. We claim we support inclusion, yet we stop inviting other faiths to give the invocation, opting instead for a moment of silence. And we cross the line of simply asking clarifying questions to indicting staff members. We are in many ways a glaring example of the problem we're trying to solve. I'm part of that problem and I own it. Uh, but until we are willing to make treating one another with dignity and respect our priority as a board and start leading by the right example, because trust me, we are leading by example, whether we like it or not. We cannot be the example we should be. This community is justified in its continued lack of confidence. We must do better and I must do better. And, and with that, I'll wrap up my comments.
Yeah, I broke down a few things too. Um, first of all, I, I, I saw that general session too and I, I, Gore and I attended, um, a different session this afternoon. And I, I think you may want to talk about that too. So I'll, I'm gonna hold off on that. But I, I, one of our constituents and I did talk about something that we neglected to talk about when we talked about the budget last week. And that is what money are we committing to, to this audit? Which is another word I want to talk about in a minute. What are we committing and where in the budget are we getting this money? And what is the budget for, uh, for this kind of, for this kind of study? Because it can get expensive and if, if this is our priority, then we need to make it in the budget and make sure we're spending the money for it. So I really want, uh, Elaine at some point to talk to us about that and where this money is going to come from. I think that's really an important thing. But her other comment tonight was about, it was such a small percentage of the population. And I've been thinking about that lately. Um, we did have one of our high schools send out a survey to their students and their parents, all of them. And apparently only one high school did it because we wanted to keep it at the district level. And I'm kind of thinking that was a great thing to do. I think every high school, every middle school especially, has their own culture and their own issues and some of their own problems. And I would love to hear from all the students. I would like for all students and all parents to have the opportunity to voice what, uh, what they see, to tell their stories and really get a good community feel. And one of the things that, uh, we talked about today in Tazby was language. And I think calling this an audit makes it feel very sterile instead of making it feel encompassing and, and that we want to be better. And so apparently the word assessment and audits are used interchangeably. And I kind of think assessment just makes it feel more inclusive of everybody's opinions. So I'm wondering if maybe we can go down that road. Uh, they said probably the only difference in an audit and an assessment frankly is sometimes audits are mandatory where assessments are self, uh, you, you're looking within yourself for that kind of change. So I think it's important that we look at some of the language we're using because if we want all of our community to be part of a community conversation, then we need to invite all the community. And it needs to be safe places that people can express what they want to express. So I, I don't know what the cost of that is of actually getting a surveyed out to all of our population, but I, I think that's really something to look at if indeed this is going to be the priority of the board to really understand our community. And one of the, the other thing is, uh, one of the classes we went to today, um, it was a district the same size as our district basically. And they've been engaged in diversity conversations and equity conversation for the last two years. And they, they've brought in an outside firm and their, their demographics look very, very different than, um, LISD. But their desire to do what's right for all their students is exactly the same as LISD. And what they, and one of the words, uh, one of the language pieces they used is that it's not enough to give everybody opportunity. It's about giving equal access to those opportunities. And that's kind of stuck with me all day. And we've heard it before, but I, I really think we need to, um, we need to maybe look at this school district for some of their role model and what they did and how they got their community involved. Because it really did feel like it was much more of a community, uh, grassroots audit, the community. At the same time that the community was having conversations, they were going through strategic planning. You can't have these conversations if we don't have a plan, a mission and goals to go along with it. We've got to kind of start doing everything at the same time. And so those are the kind of actions I would like to see. And I, I do agree that this is a board-owned situation and we've got to be so much more involved than waiting for administration to tell us what we're doing all the time. And so we have to own that as a board. We're going to have to demand that conversations be brought to us, what's going on in our district. Uh, and not, not that we're supposed to, you know, manage it in any way, but so we can also understand the conversations that are going on in our schools. And I'll leave it at that because I know a lot of people want to talk.
Um, yeah, w- one of the things I think I'll, I'll kind of start with, for anyone that thinks it's as a small percentage because our two community conversations, our diversity and equity group has been looking at this for years. And we've had students and we've had family members and we've had teachers and we've had, we've had staff come and talk to the, talk to us about this for a long time. And so I'm unwilling to say that the number of students that are being mistreated is not high enough. So we, we need a higher percentage of students before we are going to accept that this is a problem. Um, I, I, I just, so at first I'm going to address that, but it wasn't just two community conversations. It was years of, of conversation. Um, I, in terms of the survey, well, I think the survey is a great place. Um, the survey that was sent out, I know it was one campus. Um, the one survey was also sent by the campus. So right now there's a lot of lack of trust. And so that's why I think the, having an outside entity for an equity assessment of helping us move forward, they're going to bring you that data with the school. They're going to work together. They're going to look at the number of students and for referrals and AP classes and CTE classes. They're, they're going to be looking at all that data. And they can help us reach out and bring in more community to join the conversation with us. But, um, I think one campus sending out their own survey with their own questions, um, is not the way that, uh, we should proceed. I know that there was a lot of people in my community that received that and they were like, who's sending this? I thought we were working with an outside group. Where is this coming from? Is this anonymous data? Is this not anonymous data? Should I fill it out? Do I trust filling it out? Um, there was a lot of concerns and so I, I do think that we should look at enlisting more voices. But I also think we need to be real careful about how we're doing that and how we're, um, involving our community and really earning their trust in the process. And us shooting off a one-off survey that, um, I don't know how, how much process went into, to those questions and making sure we had, making sure families felt safe in their responses, um, is the right thing to do right, right now. Um, I wholeheartedly support us moving forward with, um, with an equity assessment. And I agree with Pam. Pam and I were on, on this same session. And, uh, I'm sure many districts are, are talking about this, but I think I was sitting there watching that feeling like they were saying, hey, you, Leander ISD. And I think, um, there was a point where I was typing in a question and Pam asked that question, um, right at that same time. Um, so I, I think that there are other districts that we can look to and, and talk to. And, um, this district, I think it was Aleaf, um, but they, uh, looking through the vision, it started with the board vision and that board saying this is something that we really support and staff knowing that this is something that was really important to, to their district and to their board of trustees. Um, given COVID and given we know that there's going to be a COVID slide, I think we should even be more engaged in wanting to address these issues because it's going to be our historically marginalized communities that are going to be hit hardest with COVID slide. And so, um, aside from even, um, even the, the other issues of overt, um, bias and passive racism, there's other issues of equity that, um, that a equity assessment can help us. And, and I don't know if we can really move forward with real goals and vision until we've won an equity assessment so that we can have all of that data there. Um, I, I love the idea of our, our equity focus groups and having campuses that, but like Jim, I'd like us to have more vision for them, you know, of, of what's their goal and, and how are we going to support them? I do think that we have to have a conversation about funding for this. Um, and make it a priority. And I know we're all worried about budget. We should also be worried about, um, how we're going to take care of our students in this time. And so I think mandatory training, just as we do, um, mandatory learning group training, we do mandatory, uh, training for all of our teachers as they come back from the summer. We show our teachers what's important to Leander's culture by what we include in that training. So if somebody comes through for our teacher training and they're like, I don't really want to do that learning group training because professional learning communities, they're just not my thing. I don't like being in a mandatory training like that. We wouldn't accept that. We would say, well, this is part of, this is important to Leander. This is something that's important to the way our teachers work together in learning communities. It should be the same thing with diversity and equity training. It's, it's an assumption that this is, this is what's important to our culture in our school district. And either you're on board with that being important to you or you're not. And then maybe this isn't the right district for you. Um, so I think having a mandatory training, um, at that level is, is really important. And then I think as you, um, have more responsibilities and manage additional staff on a campus, that level of training should probably increase to some level as if, you know, you're a counselor, you're an AP, you're a principal, you're an area soup. But I do think it starts with the top and, and we're, we're leading our district and telling them this is what we think is important. I think it starts with us of, we think this is important. And, um, we think it's so important that we're going to make it part of something that we do. I think embedded in that training, it should be very specific that we're talking about, you know, implicit bias and microaggressions and, and passive racism. Um, I think sometimes when we say some of those words, they sound scary. And, uh, and we need to just create, um, safe places that our teachers and our staff can talk to one another without judgment. And a lot of times it's just not knowing, not knowing, you know, I didn't know that was hurtful. I didn't know that, what I was doing. And so just kind of altering the culture where we can, we can trust to talk to each other. And like Jim said, and a lot of that starts, starts right here, right? Where we can talk to each other and respect one another and know that I may mess up sometimes and I may say something that, uh, wasn't the right thing, but it wasn't my intent to hurt anybody. And let, give me an opportunity to, to talk it, talk it through with you. Um, so I have my list, so I'm sorry, Laurel Lynn and Krista, I'm kind of going through here. But the mandatory training, um, I think is important. But the mandatory training, I think is important. I think our equity assessment is, is really vital to starting that process. I do think that we have an opportunity to really partner and collaborate with our P T A as, as a resource that's available to us. National P T A is doing a lot of wonderful things on diversity and equity. And we, I was excited. I know that we've done a lot already with our, with our literature and, and our reading and our text, our reading selections. And I think that's, that's amazing of being able to do that. I think we need to continue to have like a culturally responsive lens on those texts. And also in our like social studies curriculum of, of how we're, how we're teaching, just being deliberate about the infusion of our historically underrepresented population. How, how are we infusing that into our curriculum? I love the American Experience course at Glenn. I sat in that class and I think she was going to have to kick me out and remind me that I wasn't a student because it was, it was a wonderful course. And I asked the students, like, why'd you sign up for this class? Like, how'd you get here? Did you know what you were signing up for? And a lot of them were like, no, not really. This teacher recruited me. This teacher came and talked to me or she talked to my other teacher. And I think that we need to be deliberate in how we offer classes and really recruit. Where times we say, well, we offered an A P class or we offered a comp side class at a campus, but it didn't make. The reason it didn't make is complicated. And I think we need to make sure, are we, what lens are we putting on that? Are, are we marketing that class? Are we talking to our students about that opportunity? And are we saying there wasn't enough students, so we can't have it there? Well, if we take it away every time there's not enough, there'll never be enough there. They'll never have that opportunity. So being real deliberate about where, where we offer those opportunities. But then again, an equity assessment will look into all of those issues for us. They're going to look at, you know, they're going to look at those classes. They're going to look at A P. They're going to look at these higher level classes and where we're offering them. Another item I wanted to talk about was our hiring practices. We've had people come talk to us. We've had teachers come talk to us. And I am by no means asking for a, as, as somebody else mentioned, I think one of our speakers tonight said, I'm not asking for a handout. I'm not asking for an automatic hire of anyone. We want the most qualified people in our district. But we need to make sure that we're diversifying our pool of candidates. I worry that we are not having a full diversified pool of candidates. Over the past two weeks, I've been keeping tick marks here. I've talked to 56 principals and teachers in our district. And of the principals, I talked to 17 principals and I asked them about hiring and what that looks like. And they say, well, they come to me at this point and I'm hiring the most qualified and that's what is important for my campus. But they kind of all are the, the same type of candidate that's coming to me. So my question is, what do we need to do to be more aggressive in getting out to historically, to, to these campuses, to our, our black, our institutions of higher learning that are black institutions, right? Our H S I, our Hispanic serving institute, institutions. Are we, are we at those campuses? Houston Tillison isn't, it's in our city. They have a great teacher ed program, you know. What, what are we doing there to actively recruit candidates to apply and to hire the most qualified? I also think that requires us to take a deeper look into our hiring matrix. In our matrix, I know we have different items that we look at and, and weight and importance. And if we look at L I S D legacies or people who have long-term years with us, it's going to create a, a system where, where we all are the same. So I think it's important that we look at that. And while I think that's very important that we have people that understand our culture, I also think when we're adding multipliers or whatever we want to call them in our matrix for items like that, we could add a multiplier for candidates that have experience in minority, majority school districts or schools. So we're looking for candidates that have taught in those type of I S Ds or schools. So they're coming with that type of experience. Really, I think that equity assessment is, is what's really important to getting us on the right track. But a part of that too is, while I think the training is super important, I think the knowledge of all of our staff to have really a baseline knowledge of diversity and equity is really important and it's their duty to implement that into all of their jobs and tasks. I think that we have to really talk about showing that this is important to our staff and to our community by creating a position that's our office in diversity and equity or a director of equity and diversity. This is someone who helps organize, someone who helps lead a clear and unified vision. They work with curriculum. They work with our language arts. They work and with all these different departments, making sure that we're all moving towards that track. I think you two ladies, I think you two have done a phenomenal job leading us. I mean, you've been leading this very, sometimes volatile, sometimes hard discussions. They're hard discussions. And you have a ton of other responsibilities. You have a list of things that you're responsible for. And I think we need to make this the number one top priority of someone. This is what they think about every day when they go to work. Their priority is diversity and equity. And making sure we're thinking about that in, in our, in our communication, in our curriculum and, and how we message things to our community, that's their job. And I think that the equity assessment will be critical for them to kind of lead in, in that position. Cause it will, it will outline, okay, here's where the deficits are. Here's what we have to do. But I think until you have someone who's leading that charge, it's going to be really hard to make that a priority, to move it to the top. And if we, if we want to say this is a priority, if we really want to, you know, walk the walk, then I think we need to put the resources there to, to empower the district to walk that walk. And, and I don't think we're doing that right now.
Oh, I'm sorry that you're finished.
No, I am.
So I, I am, I, I suggested the survey because to me it brought in more people. I am fine for an outside assessment to go into our schools and get more voices involved. What I'm fearful of is having, is allowing it to become an excuse of why we won't, we are, we're not going to change. You can't force people to change that don't want to change. You have to show them why it's a better route. You have to lead in love. You have to lead by example. I get all that. And so I just want to make sure we're giving all of our communities a chance to have a voice. So they all want to take ownership of this. I'm fine if it's with an assessment. It doesn't have to be a survey. I just want everyone to know that their voice is important. And just because they weren't part of the two diversity conversations, it doesn't mean we don't want to hear from them again.
Absolutely. And I think that voice is important. And, and, and that's where I think having a diversity and equity officer also helps. Because there's going to be some people's voice who's going to say, well, it's simple. Racism doesn't exist. That's my voice and this is a waste of money. And, and we're going to have people that, that say that. And that's their voice and that's their right. And we're going, and that's where someone who, it's their job to, to help educate and help bring people along in the discussion. And that's what your diversity and equity director does and, and helps lead that charge. I think a lot of the things that we talked about were, were long-term. And, and I know that it's a process, you know, it's a long process. And I think I mentioned that it's a long journey. But it's been a long journey. This wasn't an overnight. This wasn't, we had two symposiums and here we are. No, it wasn't that. We had lots of students come for a long time. We had promposals. We had a, a black man come to our meeting and the police called on him because he was a threat for his skin color. We had students after students come talk to us. We've had teachers come talk to us. So having, this isn't an, an assessment to figure out if racism exists. I think we're past that at this point, at least I, I hope we, we know we're past that. This is a point to figure out, okay, what, where do we go from here? And that's the purpose of the assessment.
So I want to jump in real quick because I've been receiving a lot of emails from constituents. And there seems to be, at, at least in my mind, some confusion over as we talk about equity, diversity and inclusion, talking about our LGBTQ plus community. And somehow there's, there's conversation that within this framework of this discussion, we're talking about creating an entirely different sex ed program. And I, I, I think Trish alluded to that during citizens comments, that that is a member of our school health advisory committee or SHAC. And that they would be bringing recommendations as part of their charter. But I, I was wondering if Laura Lynn and/or Krista, and, and again, to echo what Gloria said, you two have done a, a phenomenal job, right? I, I, I truly mean that. But I also think that there's, we're now at that, at that stage where we have to say, here are some, here are some concrete first steps that we're going to take. And I think this, this conversation tonight i- is, is fleshing some of that out. But I was wondering if Laura Lynn or Krista could speak to the difference between inclusion as it applies to our LGBTQ plus community and how that is separate from a sex ed curriculum that we would apply to our elementary, middle and high schools.
So when we're talking about equity and diversity, what we're, and, and one of the things we learned at these community conversations is do our students feel a sense of belonging? And so some of the things that we talked about, right, are, are our students recognized for who they are? And are they not only included but belong at the campus and belong in those groups? That is totally separate from our sex ed curriculum. Now, in Leander I S D, we have reviewed our human sexuality curriculum every three years. And, and it goes through our SHAC program, right? So we go through that as required and then they bring a recommendation to you all. And so that is something that we do, but it is separate from, and we want it to be separate from. We owe it to our LGBTQIA community for it to be separate from that, right? It is that, that does not encompass who our LGBTQIA students are. They are each individual and unique and we need to honor them for who they are and accept them for who they are and have them feel belong, have a sense of belonging in the school. And so the way we would approach our training for our teachers would be around that. And our sex ed curriculum is something different. I also want to clarify that when we look at sex ed curriculum, that is for grades seven through nine. And that anything younger than that, so grades four, five and six, that is a puberty curriculum. And so I did want to clarify that because sometimes people get confused and think we use sex ed curriculum at four, five and six. And we do not, it's puberty. But that's how we separate those two because we should separate the two. And it is about equity and diversity while honoring each and every student who they are and making sure they belong in their, our community here in Leander.
Great. Thank, thank you for that explanation.
If I may, I'd like to make a couple of comments. The first is, I've gone back to look at the administration recommendations from the presentation that we were given. And I've kind of focused on the phase one since, you know, I'm really focused on next steps. I think in, in the meeting, my questions were, what are we going to do first, right? Where, where are we, how are we turning this into action? Because the four bullets that are part of phase one are limited in terms of the, the perspective and the detail that they can provide as we think about next steps. And so my first comment is I'd like to understand those four bullets in more detail. I think if that's the proposal of the administration, that, that those are our targets, then my ask is, I want to understand those fully. And I want my fellow board members to understand those fully so that we can modulate just a little bit if we think we need to, or we can endorse and move forward and everybody's on the same page. I think as it relates to some of the other comments that have been made in our citizen comments and by other board members, I personally care less about whether we call it an equity audit or an equity assessment or whatever we call it. I'm focused on what it is and what it does and what it means. And, and I really want to see those details and understand what we expect to get back from that process and how we expect that to be able to guide our actions afterwards. And in many ways I see that as kind of a gateway step. While we can take other actions and do other things, that assessment or audit is going to inform a lot of other things that follow. Not just what, but how and lots of other details. I would also say that for me, community voice and community input on all of this work is critically important, has been up to this point, remains today and will be going forward. But I personally don't think it's necessarily, necessary to wait to move forward until we get more feedback. I think we can do the two together. I think we can begin to explore, begin to clarify, begin to take action and simultaneously get additional feedback from our community. I, I don't see it as essential to slow the progress, to, to talk more or to listen more. I think we can do both together. I think Jim and others have made a number of valuable suggestions tonight. Jim, no offense, but it was a long list. I would love an opportunity to digest that just a little bit more and understand how your suggestions and the suggestions of other board members fit within the four bullets of the phase one proposal of the administration. And that we together as a board kind of get synced on what it is we want to bite off first. We can't solve all of this at once. We've got to decide which steps to take first and it's, it's all important work. But we've got to kind of pace ourselves a little bit. And, and we've got to choose to do some limited things really well so that we can make progress and, and continue to do this important work. The last thing I wanted to say is a comment about mandatory versus voluntary. I fear that my question has, has kind of been misunderstood. My question from the prior meeting in terms of mandatory versus voluntary. My intention in asking the question was never to open the back door and let everybody out of the building before we open the front door and let the trainer in, right? That was, that was never the intent, to make voluntariness a way to avoid the training. Really, and, and I think Dr. Gearing, based on his comments, kind of understood where I was coming from. It's really the notion that while we can make the mand, we can make the training mandatory, we can't make change mandatory. We're talking about people. People have to, and Pam was talking about this earlier tonight, right? People have to choose to change. They have to be open to change, willing to change. And, and the change is what we want. Training is a vehicle to get the change. And so I'm not saying that there shouldn't be some elements of our training that are mandatory. And I think that maybe gets to the embedded training that's in the fourth bullet of the phase one proposal. But I think if there are deeper, more comprehensive training options that are voluntary, I think those have the potential to be really, really valuable for those who seek them, who want to learn, want to grow and are ready to embrace that content. I, I think, I think this is different from some of the other P L C or compliance training that we I, I think, I think this is different from some of the other, um, PLC or compliance training that we do that we consider mandatory because it's less about changing deeply rooted, um, biases or perceptions. It's more about changing processes and standard operating procedures and things like that. I think this is a different kind of change and it requires us to think a little bit differently about it. Um, and, and as I indicated previously, the reason for this observation or this question previously was the goal is to help ensure that the training is effective in changing perceptions and changing behaviors. And if effectiveness is the goal, the question was simply, is mandatory the best way to change behavior and change people's hearts and minds? So I'm not saying there's one way to do this. I'm not saying it has to be voluntary. I understand the, the natural inclination to make training mandatory so that we make sure the change happens everywhere. I'm just saying maybe we ought to find some balances in this that help to embrace the desire that, that folks in our system have to learn and to grow a- and to give them some additional opportunities for voluntary training. So, uh, that was the, the concept behind those comments and I, I hope those make more sense in that context.
So this is probably a question for either Dr. Gearing or, uh, Madam President. Erin's request that, you know, he'd like to see my list. And I know that Gloria, um, you know, she assembled her list. And I'm assuming, uh, other board members have their list as well. Um, is there a legal means by which we can get all of these lists together in one spot so that we can, uh, redistribute them to all of the board members? And what would that look?
Yeah, y'all can go ahead and send them into Donna and Donna can get them out to compile them together and get them out to, to the rest of the team.
All right, I, I'll do that. And, and Erin, I appreciate, uh, appreciate your comments and the clarification. Uh, however, you and I will disagree a little bit on the mandatory versus, um, um, optional. Uh, but I do, within that, here's some, some merit to, um, maybe a baseline of mandatory training um, for everybody, um, with that, uh, that, that optional training for those that, uh, really want to dive deep and, and get a deeper understanding of how they can affect positive change in our community and, you know, uh, by, to a greater extent, our, our world, right? So, uh, m- maybe there's a compromise in there where we have, uh, a baseline of mandatory and then, uh, uh, some other optional offerings for those that are interested. But, uh, I appreciate your comments.
Um, I was just going to tag on to it. Jim said, I think the mandatory versus optional. Um, yeah, maybe we weren't speaking the same language or, or not, uh, hearing each other, but, um, I think that mandatory at, at some base level. And yes, we're trying to change people's perspective and this deep rooted feeling. But if some, if people are unwilling to even participate in that first level of opening their, their hearts and their minds to those concepts, then I think that's a real telling, um, signal. If they don't want to even at a base level, if that, they're just like, I can't participate in even some base level mandatory training for your district that includes diversity and equity, then is that anyone that we would want to be a part of Leander ISD? I would hope not. I would say you shouldn't complete it then. If it's really something that you're opposed to, please don't complete it and, and please see yourself to the door. I think that's, that's their self-selecting, uh, not to be a part of this community. But I do think there should be some optional opportunities for people that want those, those deeper dives and, you know, some of those more in-depth trainings. But I do also think that those more in-depth trainings should be mandatory as people, um, their role in the district changes to a position where they're managing other people. Cause they are setting a tone, they're setting, um, a vision for their department, their school for, um, the way that they're going to operate. So I do think that that, uh, additional training, uh, that more in-depth, you know, uh, opportunities that I know a lot of our staff has already participated in. And, and I know, I mean, I think almost all of our principals, is that correct?
Yes, the majority of our principals went through beyond diversity training in the fall of this year. And then we had several district staff, additional, um, assistant principals and ICs who were going to go through that in the spring. However, due to COVID, we delayed it, but we still had the opportunity to have them come back and complete that training.
Awesome. So some of that, you know, we're, we're doing and, and that's, that's what I mean when I talk about mandatory. So I guess, yeah, I'm mostly, yeah, I think it should be mandatory. But what the, what the option for people who want to, to have that deeper dive, to, to be able to participate.
And, and so Gloria, you bring up a good point. And even, you know, in, in my military career, there is a baseline of, uh, continuing education that I need to uh, accomplish to even make me eligible for the next, uh, step in my career. But beyond that, once you start getting up into a senior leadership position, there is a host of, um, supplemental training that you can take if you want, that ends up being the differentiator between those that are selected for leadership positions and those that are not. So, um, applying, applying that same model to here, um, and to your point, you know, as you, as you move up into, you know, more supervisory roles or management roles or administrative roles, those would be differentiators that would make you competitive for those positions. And, uh, would, would certainly, um, be a consideration when we're making a, a determination of which person we're going to put in that role. So I, I, I agree with that as well, Gloria.
Thank y'all. I think, um, did I see somebody else's mic off? I want to make sure if somebody hasn't spoke then yet.
So I, um, I saw the survey that went out from the principal and I really have a lot of respect for that principal who offered to, uh, bring his community together and have conversations. I thought that was a great idea. And, um, I think, I think that would be a great idea to do at all of our high schools, maybe invite just everyone from the feeder patterns. Um, I, I, I feel like after listening to citizen comments that we have some community, community members who wanted to be a part of that process and missed the two meetings that we had. So as, as we roll forward, I'd like to see, um, more opportunities for the community to talk to each other and to the district.
I agree with what Erin said there. There's no reason why the equity assessment, audit, whatever we're going to call it, um, can't happen a- at the same time, right? We can do some of those things, but I would ask that whatever survey tool that, that we use for our schools, that it's something that, um, that someone has helped us create, possibly whoever we use, you know, to help us with this equity audit. I think they would probably be the, the right people to help us craft those questions and, and make sure that, that we're asking the right things and make sure that we're making the survey available to all of our families. And that it's not only, um, in English, but it's offered in multiple languages. And that, um, and that it's completely anonymous and that they feel safe that it's anonymous. And so I think that's a big part of where this outside firm comes into place to help lead the charge with that, with that survey. But I definitely think, um, this requires community engagement all along the way.
I had one other quick follow-up item. Uh, Gloria's comments reminded me of this from earlier, but, um, a- as much as I like Let's Talk and all of the, uh, the ad hoc sharing and experiences that we've had, I do think that having, um, the right partner who can help us collect data scientifically and draw conclusions from that data is important. And just to kind of put a finer point on my comment earlier about the four bullets and understanding the detail intended behind them, I'll give you a couple of examples with, uh, bullet number two, we're talking about department and central admin equity leads. Um, I want to understand what that means. What, what are the responsibilities? What are the expectations? What comes with that, uh, that moniker? Similarly, our student-led equity task force that operates district-wide, what does that look like? What do they, what do they do? Uh, what are their, what are their roles and responsibilities? How does that fit? On the campuses where they go to school? I, I'm just trying to understand what that means. For, for these things that are new to us and new to me, uh, I want to understand what the detail means, right?
Alexis, did I see your mic go off?
Yeah, so I, um, I attended as many of those community conversations that we had and, um, I attended both equity and diversity symposiums we had and, you know, just been really listening. And I just want to, um, make a few comments to our, you know, to address those that have come and shared their experiences. We are listening as a board. We are hearing you. We see the pain and we see the hurt that has been caused. And we're not minimizing that in any way. And we hear you and we hurt and with you and it, it, we don't serve as a board, um, for our hate. We serve because we love you. We love all 42,000 of our students. And this breaks our heart and just as it would a parent's heart. And so I think maybe we've not told our community that very well. And, um, your coming to us has caused a lot of change. We are having difficult conversations because you are coming to us. And we are, um, having those conversations with staff, with admin amongst each other. Um, so, so we do have an open heart and we are, um, addressing this work and, and buckling down and, and, and really doing the hard work. And so I think sometimes we get caught up in these technicalities of the work and you're seeing that. But I just, I didn't want to go longer without saying, we've heard you, we're, we're doing the work. Things are changing. Conversations are happening, um, at various different levels. It's hard when you don't necessarily see that. And so, um, I just wanted to offer that out to our community.
I'd like to piggyback on that real quick. I'm sorry Gloria, you can go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Uh, my question was for Krista and, and for Laura Lynn. Um, Erin asked, um, a question about like more of the actionable steps in, in that proposal. And, um, I had some of the same questions that, that Erin had there, but I also realized that those recommendations were really based on, on the group that came. Is that correct? Okay. And so that was, that was the proposal, the four steps that they outlisted in that report. Okay. I see the heads shaking. All right. So I guess we would need to, or, or not even we, it, that probably, I mean, you've heard kind of how, how some of us feel about that. Um, but leading the charge of what are, what are some of the specifics of what it looks like in, in like step four, like Erin mentioned, you know, um, how are we going to make up those groups, what those responsibilities are? But, um, tonight, like I, I think you're, you're hearing and, and help me board. We need to give you some guidance on, on where to go. And, um, I think that, yes, we need to get more feedback from our community, but I think we need to be real deliberate in how that feedback is gathered. And to me, it's important that it is from an outside entity and that it's anonymous and that it's information that they're going to be able to, to put into their matrix and, and find real, be able to parse it in a certain way, right? And so it's qualitative and quantitative data that, that they are very, um, thoughtful in, in how they're creating that. And, and I really feel like that step comes with, with our outside assessment that, that we're, want to move forward for. And so I think for me, I, I think the next step is finding who's going to do that, um, equity assessment and, and moving forward with that equity assessment. Um, cause I really think even the list I have, I will send it over to Donna. But in terms of hiring, in terms of curriculum, in terms of the type of training that we need and how we collaborate with PTA and the culturally responsive lens in our curriculum, I think those are all things that based on at least Pam and I, with the session that we went to today, he laid out, you know, what, what you're going to find, what he's, you know, what his group is going to, um, seek to uncover, uh, seek to describe the story of what's happening in your district in regards to all of these things. So I had created this list, um, over the past few days. And today I was listening to that session and looking at those items and it was like, okay, wait, okay. I mean, it seems like all of these items are really going to fall under what a, what a good, um, qua- high quality edu-, you know, equity assessment is going to do for us. So I really think that that's a great place to, to move forward. But I also think we can move forward with, with our own equity groups and, and forming those. But, um, maybe also thinking about all those parameters of who's on there, how they're going to work and what their goals are.
So, um, I, I would like to say that I agree on, on a couple of things that have come out tonight. I mean, there's been some really great, robust discussion. And I think the board members, y'all have, um, cut a lot of thought. Y'all brought your notes back. Um, and I appreciate our community coming out again to speak to us. Um, I know there was some angst over another meeting, but it also gave us another time to hear back from the community. I think that's important. Those dialogues were saying we want to hear that. I do think as far as some of the things, we talked about student-led discussions. We talk about policy that we're getting ready to update or student co-, uh, student, um, conduct and, and, um, what they're wearing. I can't even remember the right, right name for right now. But, um, as, as we're, as we're moving forward with that, we might not be able to have the students at a board meeting and all do a discussion, but maybe that's something that would work with a subcommittee. Where we can really have students who are impacted by these policies, interact with a few board members. And then they can bring that back to the board to discuss. And that might be one of the best places for us to look in our policy. Um, we al-, you also, I heard one of our board members talk about engaging our community, our community of color. And I had, uh, mentioned to Dr. Gearing, there was, um, uh, some community mapping going on that was, uh, uh, an article that talked about having trustees reach out to certain populations of our community to make sure our community is represented. And so I agree, I think that would be great to continue those discussions. Board vision is going to be critical here. And what I hear everybody say over and over and over again in different ways or different tones is we want to be deliberate and intentional. And we want meaningful action, meaningful change. Um, and I agree with all of those comments. I do wonder if, I'm, I'm, and help me out if I'm saying this, I do wonder if, if the audit, when we go to that, is that the very first step? I'm still thinking Krista and Laura Lynn, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, that what we're seeing is a report, a community conversations, their recommendations from those find, and I'll say findings, their findings that they had, right? Because they said things such as do trainings. They didn't talk about what trainings we did or if those trainings were working well or where we needed to improve on them. So I, I would say that report gave us some findings and that's what you brought to us as a board. And I think if we stop there in the conversation, um, we may unnecessarily put, um, restrictions on y'all that, that I would like to see taken off. And I'll give you an example of what I'm talking about. In 2018, and this is just one of them, in our district improvement plan, our district says we have, the problem statement one in, in a section of our district improvement plan, while Leander ISD has strengthened processes for creating a positive learning environment, there are identified needs to enhance processes for creating enriching and supportive environments for all learners. The root cause identified was that Leander ISD needs more clearly defined systems and processes for identifying and documenting the effectiveness of specific supports addressing the needs of our diverse student population. And in fact, as you keep reading through this 2018 district improvement plan, there is a lot that I'm reading that the district spent time looking at root cause and addressing, um, diversity and inclusion. I don't think it's done. I don't think all that work is not, uh, not a good first step. But what I would love to make sure is that the restrictions are off and we're not saying that your recommendations have to just deal with the findings of the report. But I would like to make sure that y'all feel free to come back to the board and let us know based on what we started in 2018, what programs we've done, what things have been put into place. In addition to the findings we saw from the report, holistically, what are the good first steps? What are the things you think now are put on, all together to board? Say, here's where we need to go. And if that's an audit and a third party- And if that's an audit and a third party, that's fine. I just don't want you to be restricted when there might be other steps that y'all have taken that you want the board to be aware of, because right now we're just looking at the findings in that report. And there's been, there's been several steps. We need more, we need improvement. And I feel like the discussions are, although needed, to focus on our community conversations and report, I think we want to talk about it in a bigger picture because we want to solve, we want meaningful action. So that's my thought.
So I want to go back to Alexis's point about, we hear you. I I absolutely agree with that. I I heard you loud and clear a year ago when Jared Breckenridge came to our board meeting and had a horrific experience as a result of daring to show up as a black man to our board meeting carrying a sign. I I heard and I felt the 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 community's anger. But Alexis is right. We hear you. We we are at a, we are at a threshold of change in this moment. And what I hear from from my my fellow board members, and and trust me, one of the comments that I made is, this board has, I'm just going to say it the way it is, we've not always been kind to each other. We've we've gotten a little a little grumpy with each other when we don't agree. But every one of these board members tonight, myself included, they are leaning in. We are listening and we are trying. As we move forward, we're going to stumble. We're not, we're not going to get everything right the first time. And so there's a couple of things that I I'm going to ask of our community. Please, please give us the the headspace to to do this work. And if we stumble, understand our purity of intent. We're committed, we're committed to to being the change that we want to see. So if or when we we stumble, please, please give us that grace. Pick us back up, point us in the right direction, and let us recover from that and continue to to do the good work. So that's what I would ask of the community. What I would ask of the administration is that, I I I know that Laura Lynn and Krista are very proud of the work that they've done and that they should rightfully be. I I've said this before, I'm going to say it again. You two are are the right individuals at the right time to to get this conversation going. And we, as a district, are so fortunate to have you two at the wheel, driving this much needed change. That being said, there will be times that we will, we will have conversations that may sound as though we're we're picking holes in the work that you've done. Nothing could be further from the truth. That that is, I I I know, speaking for me, and I'm going to go out on a limb and say that that echoes throughout this board. When we're asking those questions, or why are we doing it this way, or did we consider this? Please know that you all are the experts and I'm not. So when I'm asking questions, generally, I'm asking so that I that I understand and that I can learn from you. When I ask, hey, have we done it this way or did we look at this? You may have already got that figured out, and again, you're the expert. So please don't take the the questions, or if we come up with, well, have we looked at this or what about this? It is in no way an indictment towards your ability to get the job done. I think for far too long, our administration has operated under under fear. Oh, my gosh, if a board member asks a question, that means that my presentation was lousy and I'm going to, that is not it at all. While we're talking about equity and inclusion, I want to make sure that that we set the proper expectation. We have to be willing, each and every one of us, to lean in with purpose to this this conversation. And we all have to be vulnerable as we do the good work, right? So I I just want to put that out there. When we're asking questions, it is not an indictment. It is not to question your abilities to get the job done. You are the right people for this job, as is our CFO, as is our superintendent, as is our transportation director, right? But we will, we will ask questions. It it is not an indictment against you. And going back to the community, we will stumble. And when we do, I I'm asking that you please give us consideration as we finally begin to do the important work that needs to be done. So thank you for letting me share that.
Awesome. When y'all come back before the board, I think what I'm seeing is this agenda item was about the community conversations report. And we have a lot of action that I think the board would like to see based on these discussions. But I don't think that's it. I don't think we want to look at that in just a silo. And so I would encourage y'all, as I said, to take those restrictions off and to bring back to the board what this looks like in a holistic picture. So some of these things we can get going. Others, maybe if we had more information, there may be a different response if we understand how this looks in the bigger picture. Again, we're talking about the findings based on community conversations. And I think we have some great action items, but I I I don't think that's it. I I've seen from 2018, we've been working on diversity and inclusion. And we didn't have just diversity and inclusion overall agenda topic. So I don't want y'all to, I feel like, oh, my goodness, they don't know all the great stuff we do and we're recommending either. Because this was, you know, related to the report, I want y'all to feel comfortable to come back to the board and keep sharing with us.
Um, Trish, do we need to make a motion? Or does does the administration need anything to move forward with an audit or or assessment? Or can can you move forward with that?
Well, there's no motions or votes tonight. But and and I don't, I don't know yet, too. I think I'd like to know what an audit, maybe that is something. Y'all can give us what this, what an audit would look like, what you're going to do, what, if that's what y'all think the next steps are. How does that look, Dr. Garing? Where do you go from here?
Yes, madam president, thank you very much. This conversation has been extremely helpful for us, and I will speak on behalf of Krista and Laura Lynn and this and the rest of the team because this is exactly the the conversation we needed to hear so that we really truly understand where the board is in this. And now we can go away and start to formulate more concrete plans about what the next step looks like. And we can bring that back to the board for decision making. So this has certainly been very helpful for me. And I'll I'll open it up to Krista and Laura Lynn if they'd like to add something. But I think we have what we need at this point to go and start to build a robust plan. And we'll be bringing that back to you for decision making.
And I'm sorry, I do not mean but to sound like we are impatient. But of course, we we do want to to see change and and see some some forward action. And I know we've got different pieces, but we do feel like this discussion is a real momentum. And we want to continue that and not let that momentum wane. So would this be a discussion that you bring back to us or items you bring back to us within?
Yes, ma'am, we totally understand the sense of urgency around this issue. And we will bring something back to you in July. I don't promise that it will be the complete answer to the, to, as they say in Hitchhiker's Guide to the galaxy, life, the universe and everything. But it will certainly be a starting point for us to launch.
Madam President, I I would suggest that in much the same way that we, at the beginning of every meeting, have a COVID update, that until further notice, that we have a diversity and equity plan a as a standing agenda item that we discuss upfront so that our community can can listen in at a reasonable hour. But I I'd like to, I'd really like to see that, e- even if Dr. Garing and the staff come back and says, hey, we're we're still looking at third-party vendors. We don't have anything yet, but stay tuned. At least the community knows that we take this serious, so serious that we have a standing agenda item at the beginning of each board meeting. That would be my.
Jim, I appreciate that. Can you do me a favor, though? Would you make that recommendation after we do the July, when they bring us back that? Then, because what they bring back may help facilitate what we really want that standing item to look like. Can you do that?
I I can. I'll also put an email to 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 you and Dr. Garing, what my what my thought was, and then we can go from there. But it doesn't need to, doesn't need to be a specific, hey, we're going to talk about this. But just like we have a COVID update, that that is a pretty wide aperture to talk about what the impact of COVID looks like. I think we could do the same thing with diversity and equity and leave the aperture wide so that every meeting we have, we have some update as to the movement we're making. So that was the thrust of my ask.
All right, board members, anything else?
One last thing, I know that Krista and Laura Lynn are on vacation. And they're calling in tonight as a favor to to us. So thank you. It shows how important this is to you both, that you took, we, we took time away from your family and and you did that without us even asking. Y'all both said we are, we will be there because this is way too important to us. Thank you so much for for doing that for us.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Just an encouragement to board members. I took a lot of notes, but if you would like to send me whatever notes you had prepared for this meeting, that would be super helpful. When I say that, send that to Donna, and then we'll try to get those all out to everybody, just a reminder.
Okay, excellent. Before we move on to our next agenda item, which would be a COVID update, if I'm correct, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. So it's eight forty, we'll come back at eight forty-five. Um, we are now back on to agenda item regarding our, um, coronavirus COVID nineteen update. And, um, I think there was some kind of disclaimer on, we may hear this tonight, but don't worry, it could change tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am. In fact, it could change before we're finished tonight. So, um, thank you very much, Madam President. We have, uh, the privilege of having Devon Pataville and Susan Cole here tonight, who are leading this work for our team. Um, and so they're going to give you, um, as much information as possible, but also keep it as brief as possible. Um, since much of this is, does continue to change and we still have, um, further information coming out of T E A, uh, next Tuesday. And so we, we definitely know there'll be some changes before then. So with that, I turn it over to Devon and Susan.
Good evening, Madam President and Board of Trustees. Um, as Dr. Gary mentioned, we are here tonight to give you a update. Um, I did want to note that a few of the slides, um, here maybe altered a little bit different than in the, uh, meeting agenda packet, just based on, like you said, new information that we just received today. So, um, what Devon is sharing is the most recent update with our slides and information. So tonight, we're basically going to give you an update from the state. Um, as you know, the commissioner spoke this week, as did our governor. And we're going to talk a little bit about, um, considerations and planning as we're moving forward and then talk about next steps. And, um, just a reminder, our goal is in the next couple of weeks, by mid-July, to bring a recommendation forward to the board and to our, uh, community. So that is the plan. Uh, the next slide is just a reminder that these are just things that we've been considering as we've done this work. The health and safety, voice and choice, taking care of people, and that high-quality learning experience for our students. That is, these are the really the tenants, the core things that we are considering, um, throughout all of our work. Devon?
So we are, um, our committees are working really hard to get this right for our students, teachers, and families. But it is really hard to define perfect. And so right is always going to have to adjust week by week as we plan forward. Here are some of the updates we got from TA this week. So personal protective equipment is going to be massively distributed to districts across the state of Texas throughout the month of July. That includes gloves, masks, and sanitizing equipment. Um, one of the things that's worth note is the ninety percent attendance rule is going to be back in effect for the twenty twenty-one school year. So what does this mean and how do we count attendance? So let me explain a little bit of that. So if a student is learning virtually synchronous, meaning they are live with an instructor, then we have to account for at the secondary level, two hundred and forty minutes. And at the elementary level, one hundred and eighty minutes of synchronous instruction to count ADA, daily attendance. If it's asynchronous instruction, uh, meaning that the, kind of like we did in the, the spring, where the information's loaded on Google Classroom and students are interacting, not with an instructor, but with the learning, then we have to measure progress on each day. Each individual day has to have some sort of evidence of student progress. And that is how we would count average daily attendance for that day. Draft Public Health Guidance has been, is not released yet. There are some documents out there. They're in fact published on the Texas Tribune. But the commissioner has been very outspoken about those are draft and several changes should be forthcoming and those will be part of the July second update. STAR slash E O C will be back in twenty twenty-one, according to the commissioner. But of course, it is July. So, um, this could change over the course of the year as well. But that is something that, um, T E A is saying would come back. Now, this, um, one of these last bullets is, is pretty important, but we are inches away from deploying a survey to our community to really understand the needs of families and share some of the scenarios we're thinking and ask what their family would want to do, given what we are planning. When we think about hybrid at the secondary level and bringing our elementary students back, but also providing choice to all of our families, we understand that there's an equity issue underlying there, too. Choice is not the same for every single one of our families. For my family, it may not be a choice. We may have no other option than to have two working parents and our child go to school. But for other families, there may be that option of choice. And we also understand, uh, like, uh, we had a teacher forum and, uh, one of our teachers in that forum is a high school teacher at Glen High School. His name's David, and he shared with us that, uh, he is worried about the disproportionate loss of knowledge or the COVID slide is, as it has been termed, that affects our economically disadvantaged students. And that is a real, uh, risk that we are planning for. And Susan's team, along with the Teaching and Learning Team, is planning for high-quality, uh, instruction at home as well as in the classroom to help mitigate the effects of that slide. And again, that next update is July second. Here is our governor speaking just in the last week about the importance of wearing masks and how he encourages Texans to wear masks. And you are probably well aware of the rising numbers of COVID rates across the state. And so our thinking as a school district is that we need to have some sort of expectation when it comes to students and, and facial coverings, whether that be masks or face shields, and including protecting our students, but also including our staff members. And, um, as we get to our discussion portion, we'd really like to hear your thinking on this topic as well. So, uh, one of the questions you asked in, um, our last board meeting was, how are we taking care of our employees? So, um, our guidance that we have received, kind of through the CARES Act, spells out the following. Any employee with childcare issues are eligible for two-thirds pay for up to twelve weeks, according to the CARES Act. Up to ten days of paid leave for a positive COVID test, or if they are required to quarantine. Um, however, FMLA offers up to an additional ten weeks of unpaid sick leave for that employee if needed. There is also up to ten days of leave at two-thirds pay to care for a family member that is diagnosed with COVID. And any accommodation that is needed for an employee, um, if, if they have medical documentation of any kind that we can help provide, and if it meets a business need, we are going to try to help accommodate. Our HR department is organizing a survey of staff to really understand the needs of our staff as well. You are well acquainted with this, um, picture of the continuum. And so, um, I, I just want to put it up here to give us a framework of thinking. And as we think about that middle of the continuum, that, that gray area there, I want to come back to this point of what hybrid could look like at our secondary schools. Now, keep in mind, for our elementary schools, we are still doing a facility-by-facility review that will help us plan towards bringing all of our elementary students back with the option to families to do a hundred percent remote learning, or virtual learning, rather, if the parents and families choose. At the secondary level, one of the things you brought up as our board was making sure that we have alignment for families in their schedules, um, so that families are able to settle into a routine. So currently, what we are thinking is planning towards the middle and the high school, um, divisions of when students are going to school. That gold group, gold group or the blue group would be similar for each family. So if I have a, um, a student or a child who's in high school and a child who's at the middle school, that we would, through our system, align their schedules in the same colored group so that their routines are relatively the same. Susan?
Thank you. So, want to talk just a little bit about what we've been doing on the teaching and learning side, preparing for virtual empowered learning. So the good news is, uh, as you heard Devon mention, our T E A will be funding virtual learning. And, uh, that's something they did share on Tuesday. So we're working on a plan to submit to T E A, um, and they're supposed to be giving us more guidance about what that plan would need to, uh, look like on July second at their next, uh, briefing. So, you know, the good news is T E A is in line with what we have been planning, uh, for, and that is that we plan to offer choice for our families. And, um, I think everyone agrees that's, that's very important. Our work group teams have been drafting guidelines and expectations for virtual empowered learning. And, um, you know, really working on guidelines at each grade level for minutes of instruction for different subject areas, a balance of synchronous and asynchronous learning, uh, also looking at guidance for virtual parent orientations and parent check-in. So really thinking through, and you might remember, as I talked about last Thursday, our work groups, um, do have, um, teaching and learning staff, but also principals, um, instructional coaches, deans of instruction. So we definitely have that campus uh, focus as well and voice from our, from our campus folks. And, um, just another reminder, we will, we will have a numerical grading system aligned for virtual and in-person learning. That is something that, um, the commissioner also talked about on Tuesday. So we're in line with that. And then, uh, we are looking and planning for what we're calling a virtual teacher academy. And this would happen, you know, later in July, and we would provide professional learning to prepare and support our teachers. Um, the expectation is that all of our teachers would have a foundation for teaching virtual learning. And we've already actually started this, um, this summer with offering, uh, two different platforms for our pre-K through second-grade teachers. We are offering CSOL trainings and then Google Classroom for third through twelfth-grade teachers. We know that we need to make sure we're supporting our teachers with the delivery of content, instructional strategies and tools, and assessment strategies, um, on ways to assess mastery. So these are just a very big picture view of the work that, um, we're, we're doing in preparing for August around the virtual empowered learning, um, to have, like I said before, a high-quality, robust plan moving forward.
Hey Susan, none of this would change the report date for teachers, would it?
No, um, and that's a good question, Erin. So for the training, it would be, um, optional because we can't require them to do that. But we're looking at doing that in like one-hour segments. And that's been a really successful model this summer with our professional learning, having these mini-conferences, these one-hour, and they can come and go. We can record them and then they can watch it at their own time as well. And then we would also have some of these things, things offered in August when they are back on contract. So we know a lot of teachers will want to get ahead and maybe the instructional coaches, the team leaders, department heads would go in July and then bring that back to their team. So we build capacity amongst, you know, with others in our system. And then the last slide here before we open this up for discussion is just, you saw the last week. Notice we added and read there, uh, the newest update now that will be beginning next Thursday, July second. Um, and then as Devon mentioned earlier, we are planning to roll out the survey, um, looking as early as tomorrow to our, um, staff, I'm sorry, our families on that. So, you know, we're just working around the clock to, to get ready and make sure that we're making the most informed decision, getting stakeholder feedback. We have a couple more, uh, teacher forums we're going to be doing in the next couple of weeks as well. Um, as we go forward. So with that, we'll open it up to discussion. Love your feedback. Um, anything we need to be thinking about, um, that we haven't, that we haven't discussed.
Board members?
So, um, can, sorry, can you go back to the slide with the A, A, A B? That's kind of a different graphic from before. So I was just wondering, is that going to be like a direction we're going? Cause I had meant to ask some questions about how we were going to do days before, you know, the benefit, talk about pros and cons of every other versus, um, the five on or five off. And so, um, I just didn't know if like, if the teachers followed those five days on in the classroom and then they were virtually teaching for five days, but this is a new graphic. So it would be, you know, our teachers teaching in a classroom on gold days and then not teaching in a classroom, but virtually on blue days, or, or they're just seeing different students. So I, I wanted a clarification on that.
Uh, yes, ma'am. So this is the same graphic we used at our last presentation. So if I'm a teacher and, um, let, let's take, ignore the A day, B day, if I'm a middle school teacher. If I'm a teacher and I'm, I'm teaching at Wiley Middle School, then I have one group of students come to me Monday and Tuesday. That group goes home for Wednesday and Thursday, and a whole separate group has come into me Wednesday and Thursday. And then Friday is still something that we're still designing what that looks like. It could still be for intervention. It could be maybe blue group comes back or gold group comes back to make sure that we have the same number of days of instruction over the course of an entire grading period. So, uh, as far as the teacher responsibility, the difficult change from how I've previously taught, that is going to be pretty typical for teachers across the district and even in districts across the state of Texas, is that I am planning for both live and virtual instruction over the course of the week.
And I'm confused. So the, does the student follow the teacher? So then when they're in classrooms, the teacher teaches them in classrooms, and then they're virtual, the teacher teaches them virtual? Are you saying a classroom teacher stays a classroom teacher and a virtual teacher stays a virtual teacher?
No. So what we're saying is, um, if I have, in, in this scenario, you know, let's say I have typically thirty students in a class. So the reason we're dividing into two separate groups of fifty percent each is to accomplish social distancing. So while I have half the class with me, half of the class is at home, taking part in virtual empowered learning in order to continue the curriculum at home. And then that scenario flips on the alternate two days. At the high school level, we're covering an A day and a B day.
So Devon, you said earlier, uh, and this is a couple of questions, so I'm going to follow up on it. You said earlier, we, it may not be equitable for parents that have to work and their students are going to have to go back to class. And then you may have a student whose parents, uh, work from home or whatever the reason. Are they going to be allowed to go to class and do at-home learning at their own schedule? Meaning some weeks they're going to do all remote, maybe sometimes they're going to go to class. Are we, are, are they going to have to choose? And if they have to choose, how is this going to be equitable for those learning remotely as to those being inside the class? I think we need to be really careful about that, especially our seniors and GPAs. And, and you know how competitive that gets by the end of the year, uh, of how that's going to look, look and make sure that's really laid out clearly for parents and students at the, at the beginning of this, of how these grades are going to mesh. Does that make sense?
I think so. So to answer your question, um, that element of choice is always going to be there. And we are still defining what that choice, what the timelines for that choice looks like. So to answer your question, yes, a parent could choose that I want to do a hundred percent remote learning. But then they could also choose that they could come back to school. And so we would define where that when is, about when they come back to school. Is it the following week? Is it the next grading period? That is still something that's still being defined by our teams. Another part of that. Go ahead, ma'am.
No, but it won't be at their leisure, meaning this week they're going to go to school, next week they're going to stay home, then they're going to go to school a couple of weeks and they're going to stay home. They're going to have to make choices. And when they decide to come back, it's going to have to be on whatever timeline we've laid out.
Yes, ma'am. We're defining that timeline.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, did you say, um, the teach, this, will the same teacher be teaching in-class and remote? Or will we divide those on, between teams?
So I can answer that, Devon. So that's some work that, um, our group has been really looking at. And some of that grace is going to depend on how many of our families choose virtual learning. And so, you know, if a handful choose virtual learning, you know, we're going to give some autonomy to campuses and it might look different for elementary school, you know, based on that first-grade team. If, if ten kids choose virtual, then they may have a teacher partner with another campus, another elementary campus or more that, that works with those students in first grade. Um, so it's, you know, it just, it's going to depend on how many of our families choose the virtual option. If it's a high school algebra class, depending on how many students do that, then there could be a stu, a teacher assigned to teach the students the virtual algebra class. So it's going to be a, a puzzle that we put together and, you know, with a lot of factors that we have to take into consideration. So there's, we have not made those final decisions yet, but we're looking at all those options on what's going to be best for our students and our staff.
I, I've taught the same semester virtually and in the classroom, and it can be a challenge going back and forth.
Yes, that's some of the feedback that we've gotten.
About the grading, how is that going to be equitable for those learning at home and those learning in a classroom of when we're doing, uh, putting the kids into the order of graduation?
Well, so the same curriculum will be, um, taught to our students choosing virtual learning and face-to-face. Um, our curriculum team is really, um, going through the curriculum right now and looking at all of the units of study. And the, the what will be the same, the how may be a little different if it's in a virtual environment. Um, we know that we'll be giving numerical grades, but a lot of those details, again, we're still working through and working out because we do want to make sure that, you know, we're providing that equitable, equitable opportunity for our students.
So we're, we're, we're looking at mid-July to, to have, have something, um, concrete. And I know an increasing number of our parents, um, are, are expressing, uh, an increasing level of anxiety over what, what this potentially could look like. At what point are we going to reach out and, and start polling our, our parents and our, our students to find out what this even looks like? Do we, do we have any idea? Um, it, it looks like fifty percent of them are going to stay home, fifty percent of them want to come here full-time. Um, when are we going to start, uh, gathering that data so that it will inform which one of these scenarios, um, i- is even doable?
Devon, will that be in our survey when you send it out?
Yes, ma- Madam President. Um, and first Sergeant, I was going to share with you that the, um, survey was actually being finalized this evening. And so we are getting ready to push it out, um, here in the next few days, business days, rather.
Great. And, and I'm, I'm asking, you know, obviously there's a lot of parents that are, that are concerned about this. Great. And, and I'm, I'm asking, you know, obviously there's a lot of parents that are, that are concerned about this and watching. So I, I, I want to make sure that they, they have some sense of, of, you know, when we're gonna start gathering that information. Um, and, and if I heard you right, uh, there is going to be, uh, PPE that is being delivered, uh, to the districts from the state?
Yes sir.
We have an idea of quantities? Do we have, uh, contingency plan for if we exhaust those supplies? Do we have our own supplies? Uh, do we have lines on where we're going to replenish that? Um, can you, can you step me through what that looks like?
Um, we don't have, um, exact numbers of that, of the allotments to the district. It is enough to definitely start the year and to provide, uh, students with masks that may not come to school with their mask. Should we expect it um, when they arrive to school? Um, and also we would provide it to every staff member, um, in, in any, any, any workplace in any facility.
Right. Uh, and then my, my final, it's not a, it's a comment, not a question. Um, out of everything that this district is doing right now and out of, uh, out of everything that goes into providing, uh, a high-quality education to our students, uh, I think Devin and Susan, uh, you have perhaps the most difficult job in all of public education right now. So, uh, uh, my hat's off to you. Uh, th- there's no way I could even begin to imagine, uh, what this thing looks like. So, uh, I, I'm, I'm just so thankful that you two are, are at the helm getting this thing done. Um, I, again, I, I cannot imagine what this, what, what this looks like. It, it has to be a beast. So, uh, thank you for staying the course and, and for, for doing the good work that you're doing.
Um, if you, if you wouldn't mind taking down the slide, I guess if we're done with the slide? And board members, I know y'all had, I think there were other remarks, so just to make sure everybody gets them in at least once before we go to second round of remarks.
Um, I have a question. One of the things I, I think I saw another district talking about was, and it sounds like, uh, Susan, you know, are, are planning this, um, aligning, well, it's important to align the content for our online and, and our, um, our somewhat face-to-face, but, cause it is, I mean, it's more of a blended, right? If, if we say you're going because you're gonna be there part of the time. Um, but having those online courses also align their schedule with the blended one. Because while we're going, ask students and, and families to, you know, to, to make a, a selection. I imagine there's going to be some fluidity in that, um, as people get sick, as students get sick, as parents get sick. Or I think you'll have some parents that might opt to do online and then after, you know, some period of time, they may say this isn't working for me and vice versa, right? And, um, while we would like them to pick and kind of maybe stay that route, um, I also think we need to respect that there's gonna be a lot of things happening, uh, that might cause them to change. So, um, I'm wondering if we talked about really aligning the curriculum in both that online and blended in terms of their timeline. So as kids, as students move back and forth, they're able to jump right into the other format and it's not, you know, they're, they're covering the same content at those times.
Yeah. So Gloria, what I think you're talking about is that guaranteed and viable curriculum that we really work hard to do, just as we have students that, um, move campus to campus. And so we really try to keep the pacing, um, pretty tight. And so that is a conversation our curriculum team is having as they're working through and, um, you know, rolling out the curriculum for next year is, is making sure that pacing is, um, the same for both. So yes, good point.
One other question, as we're talking about PPE, one of the things I was reading, um, was like the face shields. Um, I don't, I don't know if y'all have considered that, just because in some options it allows you to see expression, you know, I know, uh, particles still flow, but, um, it provides some level of protection while still letting, uh, letting people see each other's expression. And so I'm wondering if we've talked about those types of shields at all and, and considered if that's something that we, we would want to provide, um, to, to our students or to our staff.
So on that note though Gloria, I don't know if you saw today, their northeast or north side, I think it was northeast, uh, their kids came up with a mask that is clear because there's deaf children. And so the deaf children can't hear, of course, if the mask is on or can't read lips. So it's a clear mask, so the deaf children can read the lips. Very ingenious look, but another way to do it.
Oh, I would like to know as we develop, um, this plan, I'm still trying to, to understand that safety and security component and how we do that too, where the environment for our students that they're learning in is not so much that it feels sterile or it fills an environment that has fear, right? And, and that's a hard balance. We want to make sure that, you know, students feel comfortable coming to school and, and, but we want to make sure they're safe and secure. And I think as we keep going forward, I'd, I'd like to know how do we, how do we normalize or, or make it not a fearful environment if that's where we end up going? And I'd like to understand more and, and yet, because these plans keep changing, like TEA sent out, um, these, the guidance and what they wanted things to look like just this week. I understand there's still more features and things you're putting in place. So, um, good job on, uh, being very quick to maneuver and, and, and go forward and, and thank y'all so much. I would like to know for students and teachers, what that learning component we still think might look like and what that safety and security component looks like for both the students and the teachers. And I just, I, I don't know if I anticipated y'all having an answer tonight, given all the recent information. So, um, I, I, but I still want to see it before we get too far down the path. So.
Yes, uh, madam president, we are the designing guidelines for classrooms, common spaces and areas throughout the campus to help protect the safety and hygiene and social distancing of our students. And that includes transitions, going to the restroom, cafeteria. Um, the, a lot of the work you talked about though, not making it feel sterile and still a warm welcoming environment. That is the difficult work that teachers and campus leaders are gonna have to uh, do when they take our guidelines and think about how do we still make this a great experience for our students? Because there is, um, just this experience by itself is going to be very, um, alarming for some kids. It is gonna cause, um, a degree of anxiety based on what they're used to. And our job is to help every student feel cared for, embraced and part of the school system so they can learn at their highest level.
I have, uh, one more, um, one more consideration. And I, I don't know if this is a, a Susan or Devin question. It's probably something more, uh, aligned towards, uh, Elaine. But, uh, if we're going to, um, ask our teachers to work in this environment, uh, and, and be exposed, I, I, I wanna, I wanna hope for the best and plan for the worst, right? But, uh, supposing that, uh, one or more of our teachers ends up, uh, becoming, um, COVID positive, um, that could result in a, a, a very lengthy and very expensive, um, treatment. And I, I just want to know if we're looking at maybe earmarking some of our fund balance like we did, uh, for some of the other, you know, some of the set-asides in case we need it. Um, are we looking to bolster our, uh, insurance? Um, in, in case that, you know, in, in the eventuality that that, uh, that would happen, um, are, are we financially prepared, um, to support that?
Sir, that is a, um, very important question and it's something that we'll follow up on.
Dr. Garing, do you have anything else for us before we move on from this topic? We have still one more item on the agenda this evening.
Yes ma'am, I just need to, uh, bring up graduation, um, because of the governor's announcement about, uh, outdoor gatherings of fewer than a hundred people and the resulting information we have now from Williamson County. Um, Travis County issued their order today that, that prohibits gatherings of larger than a hundred people. Um, Williamson County, we reached out to because our graduations are, are in Williamson County at Gupton Stadium. And they indicated to us late today that we will not be allowed to have gatherings of larger than a hundred people. So that alters, um, the graduation plans that we had. Um, I know that John Graham is out of state right now. He was meeting virtually with principals this afternoon to talk through what that might look like, but, uh, and we'll bring you details as soon as we have them. But I will tell you that what it looks like is that we will probably continue to hold graduation at Gupton Stadium. But it will go back to the hybrid model we had designed earlier. In which case, um, parents and students are individually coming, um, through the stadium, uh, crossing the stage. Parents will be handing their diplomas to their graduate. Uh, we'll have the opportunity for pictures. Um, we will have to modify the times of the graduations. We will start the morning graduations at eight o'clock. Um, but we need longer, um, than the two and a half hours we had scheduled before, um, in order to get everybody through. And so those will run probably until noon or so. And then we'll have to push the evening graduations up from eight o'clock to six o'clock so that we can not, not be finishing at midnight, um, with, with our graduation. So right now we still have plans to continue with our graduation ceremonies on July ninth, tenth and eleventh. Um, we are hoping they will continue to be at Gupton Stadium when we feel right now that that will be the safest option. Um, but it will not be the graduation we had pushed out in the information last week and because of the changes to the county, uh, regulations and, and, and the state level. So we are very sad, um, by this news. Uh, we had hoped that by pushing it later, we would be able to give our students more of a normal experience and unfortunately that doesn't look like it's gonna turn out that way. Um, and so we'll have more details for you as soon as we have them and as we continue to plan going forward.
Bruce, thanks for the update. Obviously that's not information we're happy to hear, but understand the, the circumstances driving it. Uh, I do have a concern about the amount of time potentially outdoors in the heat as much for staff as for our students and parents who are participating. Um, if we haven't already, I would encourage us to look at, um, some indoor facility where we could um, shuttle folks through and, and not have everybody out in the heat for that extended period of time.
Thank you, Aaron. That's a great point. And, uh, I know that John Graham was talking with the principals today about the option of indoor graduation at one of our PAC facilities or multiple of our PAC facilities. Um, and so I know that consideration is on the table still. Um, and, uh, so I haven't heard finally from John about, um, what, what the principals are feeling at this time, but we'll let you know as soon as we have detail.
And, and Dr. Garing, um, while we're talking about rapidly changing environment, um, my activation order, um, through the state, um, has been extended to July thirty-first. And, uh, where I am, uh, currently doing the work down in Houston, um, they are experiencing a, a, a far greater number of, of positive cases, uh, which is really increasing our workload. Um, there is a, a growing possibility that I may be, um, deployed um, in the Houston area, uh, during those days of graduation. So I, I just, uh, I need to let you know that now and, and again, as the, as the landscape changes, you know, we'll adjust further accordingly.
Yes sir, thank you for letting us know and thank you for the service that you're doing down there.
Definitely. Dr. Garing and administration, thank you so much. This is, um, I, I think this is just the word I'm gonna use a bunch, unprecedented time. Um, obviously graduation, um, the situation has changed and we are now having to find an alternate, uh, plan. I think that is somewhat symbolic of the way we are trying to work on our education plan as well. Um, because as information's coming out, situations are changing and then information changes. You keep trying to put it back together. And so I thank y'all for all the hard work. Thank you for bringing it to the board. I think the board had really good discussion and good points and, um, I, I appreciate us working together um, to see what our fall looks like, but I, I don't think we have a clear, uh, picture yet of what that's going to be. I think, um, it's kind of a stay tuned right now. Board members, any other questions? Okay. All right. With that, we'll move on to our next agenda item. The last one for this evening. It is nine twenty-four PM and the board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas government code, including Texas government code five-five-one, point oh-seven-four superintendent summative evaluation and employment. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action pertaining to closed session agenda items will be taken when the board returns to open session. That being said, board- That being said, board That being said, board
eleven forty seven we have returned in open session there is no action pursuant to close being nothing else on the agenda without any uh if nobody has any objection to it we're gonna go ahead and adjourn have a good evening everybody
thank you good night